Good evening, the Finance and Law Subcommittee, you may now should come to order. Mrs. Shaws?
Present.
And Mr. Viera.
Present.
And Chairman DeMello is present. First up, we have a facilities update, see attached memo, Mrs. Monahan.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. As we always do have, once a month, Director of Facilities Mark Freitas sends us a report listing all of the work orders that are happening throughout our school buildings. So again, looking at that chart, you will see that the amount of total work orders is 2,069 work orders. The school department has 76% of those work orders, which is about 1,600 work orders. And then at the bottom of the sheet, you will see the number of open work orders and closed work orders per building. Any questions?
Okay, any action on that?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Use of facilities update, see attached memo. Back to you, Mrs. Monahan.
Use of facility, again, are from a few local organizations. Applause academies, looking to use Friedman Middle School, as you can see throughout the month of May. Silver City Football Officials at Parker Middle School. Boy Scouts of America also asking for Friedman Middle School. Again, for those two, especially for the Boy Scouts, instead of charging them anything, they do some community service for our buildings.
Okay.
Any comments, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, so the X indicates who's paying and what they're paying for, correct?
Correct.
And if it's blank?
There is nothing there. They do not have anything charged.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Monahan.
Wish to the committee?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the FY '24 Quarter Three Budget Update. And we have four items. We have the FY '24 Quarter Three Line Item Budget Balancing Negative Lines, say that three times quickly. FY '24 Appropriation Quarter Three Report. FY '24 Revolving Account Quarter Three Report. And FY '24 Grants Quarter Three Report. So, Mrs. Monahan?
The first one is just a memo, because we do have some new school committee members here. As we currently do at this time of year, we utilize surplus lines items, line items, to offset lines that are currently in the negative balance. And then we ask that you authorize the administration, the school committee, to authorize the administration to pay the FY '25 out-of-district tuitions, prepaying. So the following are some lines that can offset the $949,842 worth of negative line balances. So again, currently, is when we look at, when we do go over the line item, you will see that those three account numbers, those three account lines, have currently an excess amount of revenue in them, and they could offset those lines that are currently in the negative. So again, if we look at the line item update for quarter three, again, we have it by account number, account name, how much we've appropriated to each line, how much we've spent per line, the balance, and then the percentage of the expenditures. Again, if we look to the very, very bottom, you will see that in total line budget item, we have spent 62% of our budget. Again, quarter three, simple math, that means we are at 75% totally of our budget. So currently, we are in line or a little bit under. And then, as again, I was saying briefly, there are some lines that are higher, and that, at this time, we ask that school committee goes ahead and authorize the administration to let us offset those lines, and then if allowable, to prepay the district tuitions for the FY '25.
Mrs. Shaws?
Quarter one, sorry.
Mrs. Monahan?
Yes.
How do you decide what accounts you use to offset them? As I saw on the first page, there's one, two, three, four, five accounts in the rears. So what line items do you decide to use to pay those?
Those are the ones that I just, in that memo, are the first, the three lines there, 2410 teaching supplies.
Okay, yes.
And the reason being too, is you can see that's a huge number still open.
Yeah.
We're really not going to be purchasing much more for teaching supplies between now and the end of the school year. So that's how we kind of look to see how we balance and transfer the lines.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, of course.
I have a question. So, we're looking to offset approximately $950,000. We want to prepay for FY '25, is that what that number is?
No, the 950, so if we're looking at the total number of lines that are currently in the negative balance on that whole line item?
That's where the 949 comes from.
Correct.
Okay. Now, if you add up those three account numbers that you have listed, that's a little bit over 1.5 million.
Right.
So we're still $600,000 in excess.
Correct.
What do we plan on doing with that money?
Well, at this time, we are, we are going to ask if there is money, between now and the end of the school year, to authorize the administration to go ahead and prepay FY '21 Quarter One out-of-district tuitions.
Okay, so that's what the first sentence says in your memo to us, so that's why I made the question. I asked the question, I should say. So whatever excess of this 1.5 minus the 950 will be to prepay FY '25?
Well, it's a little bit more than that, because again, if we're looking at the, so let's not look at-
I mean, my question, let me be clear. Why are we picking these three accounts? If we only need 950,000, why are we picking three accounts that amount to 1.5 million?
We were trying to maybe, thinking that it would be helpful to explain how we will do this by looking at the three line items that have a large surplus, to understand that. So please know that it can be happening to this line, but it can, other lines have a surplus as well.
Right.
So again, if we look at it, we're right now only, we are using 62% of our budget. So if you think about it, we will, as we go continuing on to forecast, we will have a surplus that we are hoping to go ahead and be authorized to prepay FY '25 Quarter One tuition.
Okay, so, I mean, because we're only picking three out of how many lines here? Oh my God. And by the way, this is, mine's was very blurry, I don't know if yours, all were blurry?
Yeah, I got a little motion sickness looking at it.
Me too, yeah. I thought it was just me.
I had C-SAC.
Maybe it was the copy or whatever. So I just want to be careful that we're not just authorizing a blanket authorization, and we have $5 million left over. I mean, I think we need to know where we're going with this, right? I mean-
So again, we're not done with the school year. So we've encumbered, or the business office has encumbered the open POs that we have open, and they forecasted, you know, based on monthly expenses, what the expenses are going to be for the end of the year. So what we've done, as our practice, is any lines, and Mrs. Monahan identified three potential lines, and there were other lines that have a surplus, that we will utilize to balance our budget at the end of the fiscal year. Also, one of our practices that has proved very beneficial for this district is to prepay tuition for the following fiscal year. So again, we're not, these are just three examples of some of the lines that we can utilize. There are other lines that are currently in a surplus, but the budget is still ongoing until the last day of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. But we need to have that flexibility to balance the budget with surplus in other lines.
Yes, Mrs. Shaws?
Thank you. So two things. So when the, we had the presentation with the budget. There was a sheet, I was looking it over today, that the special ed tuitions were substantially lower, because that's what you were saying about, that we were going to prepay that. So even, so it looked less than what it really was, but that's because we were prepaying it now.
Correct, and we've done that quite a few.
Yeah.
Every fiscal year, we have been doing it.
Now, do you exhaust everything that's left?
Oh, yes.
To prepay it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
So whatever is left, you will go, so whatever is remaining is left, you will use that to prepay?
To a point, to a point, because again, we can only do quarter one.
Okay.
For the out-of-district. And sometimes, some of the collaboratives may not have the tuitions ready to go. So Motta Grant works her magic, and working with our collaboratives, and tries to get as much as she possibly can, and again, about $2 million.
Okay.
I mean, I just feel more comfortable that we get another update on May 15th. I mean, we still have May 15th and a couple meetings in June, right?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So what would be the best course of action today to satisfy this $949,842?
The best course of action is what we're, what we've, is our practice, is our practice out of the business office, to have, to have the authorization to balance any negative lines in the budget with surplus from other lines. And that's a practice that's been going on since I was business manager, was something that I was taught by Mr. Martin, and Mrs. Monahan has continued with that practice. And this is the time of year when we do it, because right now, Mrs. Monahan is closing out the fiscal year, and we have to present a balanced budget and make sure that every dollar is spent appropriately. So we are allowed to prepay for out-of-district tuition for quarter one. We are allowed to prepay, or pre-buy cleaning supplies, and we are allowed to pre-buy any school supplies. So this is nothing different than what we've done in the past. We're just coming to you as we've done in the past without authorization.
Mrs. Shaws?
When do you normally prepay the tuition? Is there a certain date that you have to do it by?
We begin it now. We begin it now, and then again, before June 30th, because of course, the city needs to go and, we have only a certain amount of warrants to use.
Okay.
But again, this is something we have been doing in the seven years I've been in here, and the superintendent previously.
Well, I can verify that, at least from my point of view as the curriculum supervisor, I would get supplies before the end of the school year, for the previous, for the next year, based on what you were saying, exactly that, that they had been pre-bought.
So I'm just looking at the cover sheet here, that says the 62% of the budget expended, right? So if my numbers are correct, that means we have about 13% that we're under, based on the third quarter, right? Because 75% would be three quarters. So if we're taking 13% of what, 100, what's our budget, 120, what?
114.
114, so that's 13% of that, that's over $12 million maybe? So I'm just, I'm just confused.
We also have the teacher balloon check.
The what?
The balloon check, the teachers?
At the end of the year, at the end of the year, teachers will receive that.
That's five, that's six payments that they get?
So between now and to the end of the school year, there's quite a bit of items that we will be purchasing, that we will have to pay out?
I mean, I've seen this before. I mean, I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do, I'm just saying the numbers are like really, really high of what's still out there. And I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing, that's all.
Please look, please note that it's not really, if you look at previously, previous years, and even previous quarters, we are just teetering right underneath where we are to be, which is a very good place to be.
Yeah, to be, I mean, 75% into the school year, and to have 62% or 63% of your budget expended, I mean, you want to be under, you don't want to be over what you've expended.
Oh, no, absolutely not. But I want to know where we're spending 12 or 13 million dollars too, right?
A lot of it's going to be on, 80 cents on, at every dollar we spend is on salaries. So that balloon check, those final payments before the staff go out on summer vacation, that, it's tied up in salaries.
I mean, I'm, my feeling is to get a better understanding on the May 15th meeting, to better prepare the true numbers, I guess, that's my opinion, but I'm going to let the committee decide what they want to do. So any other questions, comments on this?
I'm fine with it, honestly.
What are the wishes of the committee? Mr. Viera?
I'm okay waiting until May 15th.
Okay, Mrs. Shaws?
Would that hold you up, if we wait until May 15th?
No, we're going to do the work. We're going to do the work and begin the prepayment process. So again, we're going to continue the work, because that's what we do, and that's what we need to do, so that when we do get the go-ahead, we can hit the trigger, so that we're not delayed, and then we're not able to prepay the tuitions.
That's my fear.
But what would be helpful for us to know, having been in Mrs. Monahan's seat, is what is the information that's needed to make an informed decision by the Finance and Law Subcommittee?
I mean, that's where I stand. I mean, I need a better informed, more-
So what is it that you're, what is it that you're still missing?
I'm just, again, I'm just basically thinking that there's 12 to 13 million dollars. And again, I know that 80% of every dollar is for teachers' salaries, right?
So an encumbrance list would be helpful.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah, and get rid of the lines that we want to take care of. Because, I mean, maybe the example wasn't the best example, that's where I started out on confusion, where we have 1.5 million, and we only need 950,000. So maybe that wasn't the best example for me to better understand that.
I'll also say, this is based on my experience, we're probably going to have other lines as we go deeper into the year, go into negative.
Yep.
So again, giving us the authorization to balance the lines that are in deficit, with lines that are not in deficit, is something that we've always come to this committee, without a memo. We've always done it verbally, and it's always been approved verbally that night unanimously. But I understand if an encumbrance list would demonstrate to the committee how we plan on spending out our budget, then we will have that, whether it's the May 15th meeting or the June 1st meeting. But meanwhile, we're going to be doing the work in the back office to make sure that we are ready, because we only have three warrants left.
Sure. I personally would feel more comfortable that way. What are the wishes of the committee? Mr. Viera?
Do you want, do you want to just receive, or you want to table it till?
It's up to you, folks. What do you want to do?
I'm fine with giving them the authorization to do it, because they're going to report back to us. So I mean, we're going to see where the money goes. I think past practices shows that I'm for giving them the approval to do it.
Okay, that would be, have to be in a form of a motion.
Then I'd form a motion that we accept it as is, and give them the ability to make these payments ahead of time.
Is there a second?
No second. Table it till the 15th.
Okay, so there's no second, so now you need to make a motion to table it.
Motion to table it to the 15th meeting.
Okay, is there a second on that?
The check and second.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Opposed, two in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Next up, we have bills payable FY '24 in the amount of 873,100.
I'm sorry, I still have other, I still have other quarter items to do. That was just the line item, there are two other reports.
The athletics revolving and all that stuff?
I have to do the revolving, yes, sir.
Okay.
Revolving, and also the grant quarter.
Okay, so you're up.
Okay, great. The next one is quarter three, the revolving. Again, you will see the, how much revenue has come in, one point, just about $2 million has come in. We've expended over $800,000. So currently, in our revolving accounts, we have about $5.8 million.
Wish to the committee?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
I would just like, just to make a quick comment, I just want to thank Mrs. Monahan and the business office for their outstanding work to build our revolving funds, which I believe 2 million of those funds will be utilized to install the new softball field. So that'll leave us with $4 million to start fiscal '25. So good job, Mrs. Monahan.
Okay, motion passes, next up?
The last one is quarter three, the grants revolving, the grants financial report. Again, you will see that each, what each grant is, and how, how much is left over after we've expended. Please know that any grant that has an ending date of June 30th, I have sent out an email to all grant managers as of today, that they must provide us with their remaining dollars planned by next, by, in two Fridays, because of the city's warrant process, that we need to make sure that everything is expended, and no money goes back to the feds or the state.
Okay, do we know how much that is, Mrs. Monahan? I see a few items here.
I don't have that write-off, but I know that I sent off to about, a little, about eight grant managers. So it's very, most of them are very easily done, there's PD, so I can assure you that it's all under control.
Excellent. Yes, Mrs. Shaws?
Thank you. Do we have one person that writes grants for us?
We do, we have a grant coordinator, but I do work with her, because of course, we, it's still under my purview, so I need to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Anything else? Questions, comments? Wish to the committee?
See and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Now we're off to bills payable. Bills payable for FY '24 in the amount of 873,162.61. Questions, comments, wishes of the committee? Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 15, custodial supplies in the amount of 13,255.20, and then 2,538.25.
What is that, Mr. Viera? I'm sorry?
Page 15.
And what's the amount again?
Custodial supplies, 13,000, yes.
Oh.
Home Depot Pro.
Yes, they are-
Envoy 30409.
Yep, I see it, I'm sorry, on mine, it's page 14.
No, it's okay.
It is, it's, those are the bulk items, which is your hand towels, your toilet paper, those are items that we have.
Okay, and that was it, everything else was pretty straightforward for me. Thank you, Mrs. Monahan.
Mrs. Shaws?
Thank you. I noticed that on page nine, we have Home Depot Credit Services, and then on the page 15, we have Home Depot Pro. Why two different Home Depot accounts? And, yeah-
Sure, what happens is, the Home Depot Credit Services, we have a credit card for our groundskeepers, if they need to go to Home Depot very quickly to pick up something. And then the other one is through our Pro account, where we buy the bulk items.
Okay, that makes sense. On page 16, you had Service Pro of Providence for $6,900. What was that for?
So we just updated the HVAC system at, at Martin Middle School. And because we did that, we thought that, and our, the vendor that was doing the installation could not do the cleaning. So since the building is an older building, and we're updating the HVAC, we thought it would be very important to make sure that the entire system was cleaned by the advisement of the vendor.
If I could just also add too, that was a grant that Mrs. Monahan and the grant director, or grant coordinator wrote, that brought in over 1.1 million dollars. So that was why the city did not clean it. It was work that we went out to bid on, therefore, we're responsible for the cleaning, because we installed it. Correct?
Correct, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify, please. Sometimes when we see those Serv Pro, we think Building Department. My first reaction is, why didn't the city, or the Building Department cover that cost? But that was work that we installed.
Okay.
And it was covered through the grant.
I had that on my list too, I thought it was some type of disaster, because Serv Pro is usually-
Yeah, me too, that's what I thought. On page 20, the Quadrant Leasing, what is that? Because then it's-
Postage.
Then it has postage.
Yes, Quadrant is the company that we use our postage machine, so when we go ahead and do all the postage, the big postage machine that our storekeeper uses, that's, that's what it's for.
Okay.
The rental of the machine, and then postage.
And then postage.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have, I'll say, thank you, Mrs. Shaws. I just have one question. On page 21, 10,000, fringe, what is that? Oh, okay. So-
That's a benefit for an employee, the superintendent.
Gotcha, okay. That's it, what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion approved with the amount of 873,162.61.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. And that's it, I take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for joining us. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Fagan will deliver the invocation.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community, and to the young people entrusted to our care. And I also have another obituary to announce. And so we're going to have a moment of silence for Richard Rick Slavic, who passed away suddenly at Morton Hospital on April 8th, 2024. He is survived by his wife Kathleen Slavic of Taunton. Kathleen was a long time, Kathy as we called her, phys ed teacher at Mulcahy School. He was born in Taunton, the son of the late Stephen Slavic and Jeanette Slavic. He also leaves his daughter Kimberly Slavic and her husband Scott of Upton, and his two grandsons to whom he was deeply devoted, Will and Ben. He, a longtime resident of Taunton, where he lived his entire life, he attended Taunton Schools, graduated from Coyle Cassidy High School, and received his master's degree from Northeastern University. Richard also enjoyed golfing, all local sports team, and especially the time he could dedicate with his family. He also leaves his siblings Stephen Slavic and his wife, his sister Joanne Murphy and her husband Mike Peter Slavic and his wife Tina. He also had a brother who passed away, who was survived by his wife Michelle of Taunton. I ask you if you could please keep this family and your thoughts and prayers. These, these two were very nice people, and I feel very badly for their family. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mrs. Shaws?
Present.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Ms. Santos?
Present.
Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. Laura is absent. Dr. DeMello?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present, thank you. Approval of the minutes from April 3rd, 2024? Mrs. Shaws?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one correction. On page 10, it says Mr. Shaws and not Mrs. Shaws. So just something small, but-
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, absolutely. So if there are no other discussions or corrections, can I get a motion to approve with that correction?
Motion to approve as corrected.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. And we have Student Advisory Committee Report with Isaiah Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. There's a lot of stuff, as Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am part of the Student Advisory Committee. There's a lot of stuff going on at Taunton High School right now. As I previously said, one of our last meetings, that we were holding foreign language exams for our students. Those exam results will be coming in this week, I believe. Personally, I can't wait to see my results. Spanish, mine was in Spanish. We are officially in testing season, as we are in our final stretch of the school year. Currently, our eighth graders today took STE MCAS today. We wish all those students the best of luck. Next week, we'll, we'll be conducting, and currently, we're conducting AP exams for the students who partook in AP classes this year. I have personally, I have one next week, hopefully that goes well. And lastly, I'm excited to share a quick update on our meeting with the Taunton High School, Sub, High School Subcommittee today. It was fantastic. We had a great time working together and discussing ways to improve the high school experience, and discussing the day-to-day of a Taunton High School student. It was very enlightening for me, and I'm sure it was for all the members who were there. Everyone was super helpful and engaged, and I am confident we're on a track to make a positive change within the high school. I am looking forward to keeping up the momentum. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Isaiah. Good luck on your tests, and good luck to all of our students on their upcoming tests. It's an exciting time of year when we get to the end of the year.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, so voted. Do we have any public input this evening?
No public input here.
Okay, excellent. And so we will go to Coaching for Change presentation with Marquise Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as requested by the school committee, it's always great to have the organizations that we partner with or partner with the Taunton Public Schools to come in and share the work. So at this time, we'll turn the floor over to Coaching for Change. So I do want to inform the committee that Marquise Taylor, the CEO for Coaching for Change, is home dealing with a family outbreak of a stomach bug. So unfortunately, Marquise cannot be with us, but we have two outstanding members of his team to share their wonderful work throughout our school system. So the floor is yours.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Pete Berman. I'm one of the co-founders and chief operating officer at Coaching for Change. We're excited to be here tonight because we've had such an amazing partnership being embedded in the Taunton community and working closely with Taunton Public Schools. Coaching for Change is a nonprofit that empowers college students to ignite change in the next generation. And with Taunton Public Schools, that's looked a few different ways. It's evolved over the course of time. We started working with everyone here around two thousand seventeen, where we were an after-school operator. We came in with a two-part model where students were engaging in after-school project-based learning with embedded social-emotional learning and academic support around literacy and math and English. And that, while it felt very successful, was abruptly shut down with the COVID pandemic, at which point we were committed to continuing our partnership here and adapted our model to be virtual services. We recruited college students from across the country who would join through the counseling departments at the three middle schools to provide social-emotional learning and enrichment-type activities to create deep connections with the middle school students and with success of getting them to turn on their cameras and actually participate in activities while they were stuck at home. Since the pandemic has passed and things have opened up, we've shifted our model again to our in-school support services. This was due in large part thanks to input from the community. Our staff went around, spearheaded by Marquise, to speak with administrators, educators, and leaders in the community to find out what was most needed for the schools to be successful in the ways that we're supporting students. And that was very clearly stated as we need help in school. That after-school is nice, but in-school is needed. And so we shifted the way that we provide our supports to recruit, train, and support our college students to be working directly during the school day, partnering with teachers, with counseling departments, with administrators to do enrichment and academic support and help to build capacity for the existing staff in these schools to be able to better serve their students, to provide more individualized attention, and to be able to meet the needs as they exist today with the increase of students falling behind academically and behaviorally. I apologize that the letters got jumbled. I'm not sure how that happens in PowerPoint. But we have a video for you here. One of our former mentees in the program, in the after-school program at Friedman Middle School, we reconnected with her recently at an event at the State House. And Condalisa was an after-school participant at the Friedman Middle School who is about to be a Taunton High School graduate and move on to Harvard University.
Hey, everyone, we're here with Condalisa from Mass Mentoring. My name is Jalen Dupree. I am the hub manager at Coaching for Change, and I'm going to pass it off to Condalisa.
Okay, so my name is Condalisa Dwy, and I'm currently a senior at Taunton High School in Taunton, Massachusetts. When I did Coaching for Change, I was in sixth and seventh grade at Friedman Middle School in Taunton. And definitely, my experience has meant so much to me. Some different things that I did throughout the program, it'd be after-school, and they would teach us about different math skills. So I got to improve my math skills all the time, so that was really helpful in my academic achievements in the high school. And then they also took very much care of our physical health by teaching us how to play different sports like basketball and soccer in the gym. So we got to be more of a well-rounded person, and they also got to take us on different field trips. My favorite one was when we got to go to Bridgewater State, and we got to go into their gym and play all sorts of pool games there. And then we also got to see what the campus was like. I think that was my first time going to Bridgewater State University. So since then, I've been back through different programs, but I always remember that first time in my mind with my friends. And definitely, it's just been so impactful to me because it's shown me like from a young age what was possible for college. It's shown me how to be, you know, an effective mentor because of mentors that impacted me with their kindness, their compassion, and their just strong intent to seed our students thrive. I've just taken it with me. And now I'm attending Harvard University in the fall, so definitely, so definitely, different mentors like that's for my life have just been so inspiring. So please join Coaching for Change.
Condalisa's been nice enough to join us tonight, and so while we didn't ask her to prepare a statement, since you got to hear from her in the video, she will be available for questions at the end, if it's helpful to talk directly to the students who have participated. And Condalisa, thank you for sharing your journey with us, and congratulations on all the success. So a quick point to our implementation model. The way that we work best with the schools is a process around creating a consistent point of contact, which is required for each of the college mentors who work in the schools. So while we recruit, train, and hire them, we also work closely with the staff at each school that is partnered with us so that they can be the onsite coaches for the mentors, providing supervision, ongoing guidance, as well as evaluation and feedback for us on how to be recruiting the appropriate mentors with the right backgrounds needed to provide the best support in each school. The college mentor prepares and debriefs with their designated point of contact. We call them a coach at Coaching for Change. They have coach, they have a coach at each site that they're working at. The college mentors have a consistent schedule. Now, it used to be regimented for the after-school to be specific two days and specific two hours, but now it can be more flexible, working in the schools the days that make sense for the school and the mentor, and for longer periods of time. Instead of being restricted to those two hours for the late bus after-school, they can come in and work four to eight hours a day directly with the kids in the classrooms, at lunch, et cetera. And the college mentors work with the same students on a weekly basis. So they're consistently showing up to build the relationships. We all know that effective education is centered around meaningful relationships. And so that's what our mentors are in the schools, to help create that connection to school. The goal is also for our college mentors to be supporting about twenty students at a time, knowing that classrooms are often larger than twenty students. Sometimes there are situations that are smaller as well, but the goal is to help more students get more individualized attention, and that can look to fit what is appropriate in the setting, where it could be that they're helping to lead larger groups and allow teachers to provide more individual and intensive focus on the students who are in need. Or it could be switched for teachers to be able to lead bigger lessons and counselors to be able to lead larger groups, and the mentors provide more specific feedback to the students who need that individualized attention. This is an example of how our different schedules and the different contacts can work at school, where classroom teachers, school counselors, and enrichment staff can all work as that main point of contact at any given school. And schedules just showing here that it can work on any given days that fit within the school week as appropriate for the schools and the mentors to work collaboratively. I'm going to turn over to our hub manager, Jalen Dupree, who has been one of our lead contacts working with the Taunton Public Schools this school year.
Hello, everybody. So as Pete alluded to, my name is Jalen. Nice to meet everybody. Glad to be here. So we are actually partnered with four Taunton Public Schools right now as we speak. So we're at Bennett, East Taunton, Friedman, and also Chamberlain. So I'm just going to speak on the three of the four because we actually have Riley, who is our coach at Friedman. I'll let him speak on the model of Friedman. So at Bennett, it's an academic support, but it's also social-emotional as well. So with that being said, actually, Stephen Morgan Wick, I don't know if you guys know who that is, the principal over at Bennett, is our coach, which is a little unfamiliar. Usually it's, like Pete had said, it's more of a, either a teacher, adjustment counselor, guidance counselor. But with Stephen being the coach, it's really insightful to hear the feedback from the teachers that the mentors are working with. So one of the things that Stephen had said was, they really, the teachers really are leaning on our mentors right now to do things that Pete alluded to, as far as like working one-on-ones or facilitating small groups, things like that. So that way, they have more time to run what they need to do in their classroom. So if a student is, needs additional support, they have that mentor there for them to work one-on-one, which is super special. And within that, Stephen also gives them that freedom to take students outside of the classroom, which is big because that's kind of that social-emotional piece as well. So not only are they hitting academically, but they're hitting, getting interpersonal relationships. They're building that connection with that mentor, and that's where we really see the relationships build off, and that's where you see the academics building because they're getting to know each other on more of a personal level, aside from just being in the classroom. So they help out. Stephen was saying really quickly, they, he allows them to go like step out of the hallway, take a walk if they're done early, or if they need like a little bit of a break or just a reset. So one of the students actually really enjoyed that and told Stephen that's one of their favorite things about the school right now is that they get that time to be with a college student, take a walk with them, talk to them about their college experience, what it's like to be a college student, or just talk to them about anything, stuff that's outside of school. So that's, that's a little bit of Bennett in a nutshell. We have Chamberlain as well, where Chamberlain is doing something actually really cool. One of the mentors just implemented, it's called a social-emotional group. It's not, they don't list it as that, but it's, it's under, it's disguised as so. So what the mentor does is they teach the students how to, how to have those, like learn how to have those soft skills. Communication, working as a group, teamwork, things of that nature that they'll need moving forward as they get older. So the mentor actually took it upon themselves to build that group, create permission slips to send out to the parents that they're allowed to do so, to take them out every ten minutes when, while they're there. Well, ten minutes throughout the school day, and just, they're playing icebreakers, but they're learning, like disguised, like playing but learning at the same time. So these students are getting all these soft skills, learning about that, having a good time, and also building those relationships with the mentor. So that's huge. And then lastly, we have East Taunton, which East Taunton's model is almost purely academic. So we have two mentors there right now, working with kindergarten through third-grade students. And what they do is they're in the classroom with them, acting as kind of like a paraprofessional teacher assistant. So again, running small groups, one-on-ones, if they need to, they're younger. So if they need a reset, taking them aside, just working, working with them one-on-one, things of that. Especially the young ones, you need a lot of redirection and things of that nature, and that's perfect for the mentors because the teacher doesn't always have that time to do so. So that's what the mentors, mentors are doing over there at East Taunton. And then I'm going to pass it off actually to Riley so he can speak on Friedman. Thank you, guys.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Riley Sullivan. I'm a school council over at Friedman. I started working with Coaching for Change previous to COVID, as they mentioned, with the after-school component. Since then, I've been working closely with Coaching for Change, placing the mentors within classrooms. I've definitely seen a positive impact, although I don't have quantitative data in front of me. I can tell you a lot of qualitative data has been positive as far as, you know, the feedback from teachers. I can tell you, for example, it was probably two weeks ago where a teacher approached me, fifth grade math, told me, hey, you know, was working with the mentor Joe, said, hey, Joe got so-and-so to do work for like the first time in months, you know? The entire math class, fifty-seven minutes, worked the entire time. So they've definitely had a positive impact. They've done a good job screening the mentors and finding, you know, positive mentors that are eager to work with the children. So it's been a positive experience for me as well, and I've enjoyed working with Coaching for Change.
So I know we have a lot more slides, and I want to be mindful of your time. So in terms of skipping over a lot of what's here, I think you have the copies in front of you as well. A couple of highlights for those who are curious about the way that the process works. And for recruitment, we provide orientation to both the staff, the coaches, and point of contact at the school, as well as the mentors, and time for them to be working together before they're onsite at the schools. There's their onboarding process again, and the placement is what we call their work in the schools, as well as post-service evals that happen at all levels. We want the feedback from the district office, the principals, the teachers that are involved or counselors involved, and the mentors to make sure that we have a continuous improvement process. We don't believe that our work is done when the day is done, that we have the ability to come back and be better for the next time. And that takes ongoing conversations and collaboration and innovation that we try to do with our partners like Taunton. As the last slide that I'll go over, there's a lot of tiers to, I apologize, the typo, and the top tier should be tier three. But there's tiers to the way that we support our students. And we wanted to point out that the mentors have been used for both tier one and tier two-type interventions with the general core instruction, as well as with targeted interventions to be able to help pull students out into small group learning and improvement. Again, we're located in Taunton, and if people don't have our contact information, I'm happy to provide it to the group for any questions after this. But I hope to leave some time open that if there's any questions from the group now, we appreciate you having us and happy to answer anything you have.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Pete. Thank you for that presentation. And I, I can't tell you how much we appreciate having Coaching for Change here in Taunton. And really, the, you know, the spectrum of services that you provide and programs that you provide to meet like the different and individual needs of our students is so effective. So I just wanted to, you know, thank you, thank everyone who does the work there, our mentors, mentees, for participating. And I will just open it up in case school committee members have any comments or questions. See, excellent presentation, excellent. Mr. Pulowski?
No questions, just thank you for the great presentation. And both my kids did Coaching for Change at Parker back in the day. They loved it. So really appreciate everything that you do, and, you know, Condi's, you couldn't have picked a better example of a success story right there. So thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
Dr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess our counselor nailed it on the head about the quantitative data. Can we get that data to us? Because is this report, I mean, you have the continuous improvement slide, which has three subsets. Is this generally speaking, or is this specific to Taunton Public Schools?
So for that slide, it's generally speaking, our goal is to form deeper partnerships within the district to work with the people in charge of data. And so for the different districts that we've been able to collect the student-level data with, that's what it's been compiled to show. But our goal moving forward with Taunton is to create a more intentional partnership at that level, to have more data to show these results specifically for Taunton.
And the responsibility of the data lies on Coaching for Change or our side?
It requires a collaboration. Often, it's our goal to create the analysis and reports that we're able to share with you. But for the actual raw student data requires help from your resources.
Okay. And out of these four schools you identified, how many total students?
At the student level?
The Bennett, East Taunton, Friedman, and Chamberlain. How many total students are we impacting?
Do you actually want to go to the microphone? Because I'm not sure that anyone else can hear.
So it's, it's about twenty students per mentor, and we currently have fourteen mentors operating in Taunton.
So about two hundred and eighty to three hundred?
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure we can get that data pretty quick. I think, I think to better evaluate, I mean, yeah, I agree with everything else, the social-emotional part. Anything to do with keeping kids in school, you know, off the streets, I appreciate. And being during the day is also helpful, but I think the quantitative data would better help me understand.
Absolutely. It helps us too to be able to make more informed decisions in what type of mentors we need to be bringing in and which points of contact the coaches onsite are, you know, most prepared to host and have a vision for how to use the mentors most effectively. And that requires understanding where the improvements and impact is being made.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Mrs. Shavs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How did we choose what schools to put the Coaching for Change into? Okay.
Yeah. And our goal moving forward is to speak with the principals who are leading each school to find out which school cultures and staff are most prepared and eager and inviting to have this program operate at their school.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the only thing I'll add is uh, the conversation that I've had with Marquis and his team in the past. I, I really do believe being in the building during the school day is the way to go. And it's, I believe assisting the guidance office, working closely with the assistant principals and working with the staff. It does provide another layer of support for our students. So I'm very happy with the in-school model. Not that I wasn't happy with the after-school model, but I think the in-school model is having a greater impact on a greater number of students because it eliminates barriers. Cause you don't have to worry about transportation, getting picked up, or whether students have to be home to watch their younger sibling. So the in-school model, so kudos, and thank you for listening and adjusting your practices to meet the needs of our kids.
That's all we can do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So because we only had one meeting in April, this is going to feel like a double meeting. So one of the items that, and we are pressed for time because we only have three school committee meetings left. In the next meeting, we're going to focus on the FY25 budget. So I'm going to ask, uh, Director of Special Education and Director of Social Emotional Learning, Dr. Linda Watt and Amy Morninghand to come to the podium and provide us with an update on special education, school counseling, and therapeutic supports.
Hello, hello, everyone. I'm very happy to be here again, um, but I just want to introduce our team. So we have Kimberly Morton is our um, special ed coordinator for grades seven through 12 plus, so our 18 plus. And then Jennifer Jenkins is our special ed coordinator for pre-K through six. And Mr. Dan Fagan, our out-of-district coordinator. And it's really a team that gets us to meet the needs of our 1,600-plus students with disabilities in this district and that attend, whether they tend school here or they tend an out-of-district placement. I also have here, she's going to present a little piece, is Erica Lund. She is our East Taunton Elementary School Team Chair. Um, a few years ago, we've invested in um, our team chairs, so our, free up our school counselors to do the work. And um, we'll get into her presentation, piece of her contribution to this. So I just wanted to introduce our team. And then obviously we have Dr. Linda Watt, who will come in over there. So we'll try to be quick because we know the time. So. This is my favorite slide. There we go. So this is a highlight. This is our students with disabilities graduation rate. We are the top highlighted, so last year's graduation rate for students with disabilities, um, 88.4% of students with disabilities graduated. And then the bottom number, the orange line, is the state average. So we continue to grow with our graduation rate and we continue to exceed the state average. And we look at other districts comparable to us, like Brockton, Fall River, Attleboro, Chelsea, Boston, Worcester. We, we graduate students with disabilities roughly between 20 and 35% higher than those other similar districts. So I'm very proud and I know they graduate from high school, but all the work happens at the elementary level, to the middle school, and then of course our high school. And I can't speak enough about the high school, of all the things they do to support our kids and get them over the finish line. So I'm really proud of that. And again, it takes a village. And that's a lot of the supports the committee and the superintendent have supported us with over the years. Just, oops, just some other few highlights. I'm sure you heard this year, we had a student with a disability that was inducted to the National Honor Society. She is a senior, she is graduating. And we have our Unified Sports and we have, um, I just want to give a shout out to Elise Commerford and um, Carrie Dismaris Callis, she got married, who have consistently over the years been co- coaches. Their senior night is May 16th at 3:00 PM. It's track and field currently we're doing. So Unified Sports is exactly that. It's our students with disabilities and that compete with non, and our non-disabled peers. They compete together against other districts. Um, it's a great opportunity for, you know, some of our students cannot be, make the baseball team or the, or the football team because of their physical limitations perhaps, or, or their disability gets in their way. So we remove those barriers and we have this opportunity for our students. We have lots of students that participate. So you will also see our student who graduated from the National Honor Society, she, she is a participant there. So it's a senior night that night. We're very excited for that. I want to give a shout out to East Taunton for their RISE program. That's our program with um, students who are on the autism spectrum and, and/or intellectual impairments. And the Shine Helpers, that's a general ed classroom that they partner with. This year, they have had friendship cookies and hot chocolate, where they work with um, their buddy classroom, which is Ms. Lucy Kafka's classroom. And they pass out hot chocolate and cookies for staff who order it. So that's a precursor, a pre-academic vocational skill. Um, and they've also done lemonade stands in the past, so that's huge. And Coffee Nation continues to be a success at Taunton High School. Our hope now is that the Tiger Den is serving breakfast, that we can kind of work collaboratively and kind of include our kids there. And then I have to give a shout out for the numerous of individual achievements that our students with disabilities accomplish every single day. Whether it's coming to class, whether it's tying their shoe, or if it's passing the MCAS exam. Each day, our students have tremendous success. And then just overall, in terms of compliance, I did not put this on the slide, but I'm sure you've heard. We, when parents or people make complaints to the state, that's through problem resolution system. So for the last two years, February 22nd to February 24th, we are 91% in those um, complaints where we're found compliant. And the one or two that we were not found, that we did not get 100% compliance, we were partially compliant, those were around bullying incidences. And it's not that the schools did not do those bullying investigations correctly, but they may have not used the correct form. So you can take that however you want, but I'm very proud of the accomplishments, um, this. So everything we do aligns with our strategic plan. I, you guys have seen this, I don't need to go through this, but this is kind of leading into the, one of the biggest, big changes that's going to be starting come the fall. And that is um, the new IEP form. This is a big thing. This is a hot topic across all districts. The Department of Ed has changed the IEP form. The last time they changed it was over 20 years ago. So that's when the DaFinchi Code came out. That's like the Nokia little phones came out. Um, so that is the last time the form has changed. The law has not changed, but the form has. And this has been a process, this process of changing the IEP form started pre-COVID, but then things got delayed, uh, but this is kind of the timeline. This year, districts had the option of adopting the new process, the new forms. Um, we elected to fully adopt, we're all mandated to adopt the new form come the fall. Now, this is very important because as we look at, you know, my, this is my, I'm closing out my second full year as Director of Special Education. And if you remember a couple of presentations before where I talked about my entry work and where we had to improve and grow, you know, we do things well, but there's always room for improvement. It's like, it's like the Department of Ed has been in our heads and been in our buildings to see. So everything that we talk about where we need to grow, um, Desi too says this is where we need to grow with our form. So family and student voice, our document process, least restrictive envi- environment, integrating, transition planning, and accessibility of language. So all these things is about bringing our families to the table, improving our processes. So this is giving us an opportunity to really identify, analyze, and address our challenges with the IEP process, and then hopefully to create conditions where it improves our student outcomes with, for our students with disabilities. And if our trend is going well, our graduation rate keeps going up. So um, I think, I think, I think Taunton as a whole is in a, on a good path. Not that we don't have areas for improvement. Uh, so just an implementation timeline for all of you. Um, we have provided all training, the training of the new IEP form to all our special education staff. Um, Kim and Jen have taken this mission and run with it. Um, they've done fabulous work. We are almost done giving an overview to all our school personnel. So that's all our general educators, building administrators, support staff. Everyone and anyone that would look at an IEP to provide accommodations or service to a student. So everybody will know. Um, parents have felt, have been communicated that out via parent square emails. Um, we have parent workshops. We had our first yesterday at Martin School. Um, we had 15 parents that were going to say they gave, but nine people were there? It's okay. We're going to keep doing it. Um, our next one is May 14th, right here, for Pol Library. And then our last one that we have scheduled for this year thus far is May 23rd. And this is where we give a parent overview, all that. So feedback from yesterday, as we did do a survey, was, it was very clear. They felt good about it. It was awesome opportunity to, to connect with our parents. The IEP process is very complicated. It's very convoluted. It's open to multiple interpretations, so parents sometimes struggle, right? They, it's hard to understand. I mean, I've been doing this a long time and I still, we still have attorneys that we counsel with or other colleagues to make sure we're following and doing the right thing. So this is where I wanted just to talk briefly about that eligibility process because that is an area that the IEP really focuses on. And this is where I would love our Team Chair, Erica Lund, to kind of talk about it. Elementary, as you know, is where we start um, a lot of referrals from. We, you know, we do evaluate a lot of students, um, and I just figured it would be better to hear from.
Nice to meet you all. Um, so I have been in East Taunton, this is my third year, I believe, but not new to special education, 21 years in the field. Um, welcome to be here and explain a little bit of this to you. With the new IEP, it's obviously going to be a little trickier, but it's not that different. There's just some things that they're going to include, make it better, um, and we will help support staff as we go on. So just a couple of things, um, let me turn to the next slide. The Department of Ed posts this on their website, gives us guidance. Every school, they encourage support and would like to see every school having a multi-tiered support system. So what does that look like for East Taunton? Regular ed students start to have some difficulties. What do we do? Um, so right now, in Taunton, we have different tiered levels of support for them. We have a student support team, we have instructional leadership teams, we have academic coaches. Um, ironically, in, in talking today with the Coaching for Change, that is another tiered level of support that we would give our regular ed students. So this chart that you see here is Desi kind of telling us, okay, every, the general education should be the front door to every student. That should be the least restrictive environment for a student. We should always start there. What happens when a student has difficulty though? Is special education the next thing? No, not necessarily, and it shouldn't be. A special education is a service. It's a continuum of support for the general education setting. The general education setting should be um, a responsive environment. So what things do we do in Taunton to help with that? Well, we can bring a student to a student success team, which happens in every school. We discuss the student, we talk about difficulties. We invite parties to that meeting that may have some impact with the students, like related service professionals. Um, we discuss what types of things we could give them as supports, what things we could change in their environment if they're receiving Title I services. Do they need more? Do they need less? Instructional coaches can provide us with some more things to send teachers off that meeting with. Then we meet again after four to six weeks, discuss the student, what supports may have helped, what didn't help. Um, if difficulty persists, is that something that we need to help them with outside of school? And then the last possible is the, the referral to special education, which is where I come into play. So they would contact the um, team chairs in the building and we would start thinking of the evaluation process. So what is special education? As I said, it is a service, not a location. Special education is designed to meet the unique needs of an eligible student. Um, and related services is necessary to access or make progress in the general curriculum. These are for students who we identify as having disabilities. That's what special education is for. So how do we get there? So what does eligible mean? We identify if the student has one or more of the following disabilities. These are disabilities that are given to us from the state. They follow federal guidelines, however. So that is where our state of, of the State Department determines these disabilities. And then we kind of discuss those in our meetings. So assessments for the areas of suspected disability. A child's brought forth to the student support process, Team Chair, we discuss the suspected area of disability. We have qualified licensed evaluators who then um, perform these evaluations that are requested. Assessment tools are used with normative data. What is normative data? Normative data is all of the materials that we use to test students are current, most up to date, and they are using nationwide results that were research-based, where they tested other children in that age group to determine what's normal for that age group. Now, does that currently align always with our curriculum? No. It is really age-appropriate for that child in, across nationwide. So we're always using normative data to make decisions. Um, parental participation and engagement, anytime we send out consent for students or a parent contacts us, we would make sure that that parent has involvement. That starts right at the consent process. There's a page that they receive that they can share anything with us. Then as evaluators are conducting evaluations of students, they may contact parents, say, you know, give me some information that you could share on their developmental profile, what types of things are they doing at home? What was their birth history like? They may get all of that information, background data, to then perform the evaluation, along with the assessments that they're using. It is nondiscriminatory or racial or cultural basis. So another thing we touch upon is, we do have EL students who receive special education testing. We take that into account, we discuss that, um, and we also provide evaluations with interpreters when needed. If, and we always kind of evaluate that at the student support teams. Um, so we're always making sure that we're providing the best type of testing we possibly can for the student and taking account everything about that student, from cultural to language. Um, even if a child is in a special needs program, or a child currently has assistive tech device and they can utilize that during the assessment, we make sure that we're using that during the assessment. Okay, so that's just a snip, a snippet of it. Not just disability. Is the student making effective progress? This is the next part of what it means to be eligible for special education. We have to consider, is this student making effect, effective progress? For example, if we find that a child does have a disability, we've identified a disability. The next question is, is that student with this disability making progress? Sometimes they may be making progress to the curriculum. Does this student require specially-designed instruction and/or related service? So we take all of this into account. Is this student with a disability making progress? If they are, does that mean that they're eligible for special education? Or if they're not, what do they need to become, what do they need to become successful in our gen ed program? We do have to consider some exclusionary factors. So limited English proficiency, which I mentioned a little, so- social maladjustment, inability to meet the school discipline code, or a lack of instruction in reading and math. So some of these things are not necessarily a result of a disability. They could just be things that are happening with that student that we as a team discuss together. We rule out and we look at, at some of these student success teams that we spoke about. How long is the referral process? So when we receive consent to evaluate, we have 30 days to test. Um, and this is state mandated, so it is lawful. We have to follow this process. We do do a really good job here at Taunton, making sure that our timelines are right up to date. We have 30 working days to evaluate. The team meets within the next, we have now 15 days to meet. The team meets, we determine the eligibility no later than that 15 school working days. If eligible, we develop an IEP. We determine the placement of the child at the team meeting, and then we propose an IEP. That IEP is written at the team with the parent's involvement, and it is a, we formulate a draft together. That parent then leaves, receives the drafted IEP, and has the ability to consent or disagree with the placement in the IEP services. Um, as soon as we, if they do agree and send that back to us, as soon as we receive the consent and it's signed, services begin right away. They do have 30 days to respond and to kind of look at this and evaluate the draft. And again, I just want to reiterate, they are a part of this team process. They're, and this new IEP is going to include children and parent voices even more than we already have, um, which is great because we're going to start seeing things like what are, what are the goals of the student? And we're going to be asking even elementary students, what do you want to see for yourself? And including that in the IEP, so there are voices in the IEP. What happens when a student does not qualify for special education? Um, if a student does not qualify, then we, myself as the team chair who's leading these meetings, discuss our D cap and again, our multi-tiered support systems. So for example, if a child is not found eligible but may have a disability, we've concluded that the child doesn't, doesn't, has a disability, but is it, it's not access, it's not an issue with their access to the curriculum, I'll, I'll give an example. So if a child has a physical impairment and they need a crutch to ambulate around, and they are in a classroom, but they're accessing, they're asking questions, they make it to PE class, they're doing everything their peers are doing, their grades are right on par, but they might have a general weakness in a reading comprehension, for example. At the team meeting, we would determine, okay, there is a physical disability. We've identified there's a disability. But is that student accessing? That student is accessing. So they wouldn't qualify for special education. However, they may qualify for a 504, so we would refer them to our guidance department and say, you may be eligible for a 504 plan. We'd instruct them to contact our guidance, and that's a different process where they discuss the disability and if that child needs any accommodations to their school day and environment, to help them succeed in the environment. Um, they also may benefit from Title I servicing. We have peer tutoring, we have after-school programs. Occasionally every, in an elementary level anyway, will offer different types of tutoring throughout the year where they send home papers to parents, saying, is your child interested in extra math work? Um, some after-school reading. And those are all examples of what multi-tiered. And those are all examples of what multi-tiered systems we have in place.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then, just to round up the special ed stuff, what's next for us? Continued collaboration and communication with all stakeholders. Our evidence-based practices and the priority areas, so we have like our high-quality instruction materials, all our instructional leadership teams that were, that's throughout the district. We're going to continue to review and training and support our teachers in, to implement the new IEP form. It's a new IEP form, so there's going to be a lot of support needed, because as we grow, you know, DESI's still giving us advisories, and we'll share that information as we go. And then, continued professional development opportunities. Next year, we'll be heading into a tiered-focused monitoring evaluation through the state. That's a state audit. And then, our continued growth with our LERT TOPs. We want to get the copy center at the high school up and running, and then we're going to explore some hydroponics gardening for our students to do. So, and then next, because we're worried about time, Dr. Linda Watt is going to present an update on our social, emotional learning and mental health.
It's a good thing I talk fast. So, May 1st is Mental Health Awareness Month, and everybody here was given a sticker. That's a stress relief sticker, so you can place it on the back of your phone, you can put it on something, and you can rub it. So, one of the things that we're doing in all of our buildings are, the stickers are available in all of our buildings, plus we have bulletin boards and pencils for all the students. So, I wanted, at first, to start the difference between social, emotional learning and mental health. Social, emotional learning describes basically mindsets or skills and attitudes that help all students succeed in school, career, life. We all need social, emotional learning or social, emotional skills versus mental health. Mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. We all have mental health, but when people talk about mental health, they talk, they tend to talk more to the disability of mental health. So, it affects how we think, we feel, and we act. It also helps us determine how we deal with stress. So, they're interlinked a lot. What are we doing currently in the district with regard to our social, emotional learning and our mental health? We have universal screenings currently going on. Twice a year, we do the CELIS, which looks at social, emotional learning, and that's the five castle competencies. And then, we do the SABERS twice a year that looks at more mental health and behavior. Currently, with our interventions, they're all based on a tiered system, which I'll get into. We're utilizing evidence-based curriculums to address all five castle competencies or any identified mental health concerns. This is how we're choosing our interventions. So, probably mid-fall, we met with all of our school counselors. We went through how we're going to tier students with regard to our CELIS data, our SABERS data. But, we also want to include teacher input. We want to talk to the teachers about, any teachers that they have concerns of children within their classroom. We are looking at our referral data, so we're looking at our data that comes to admin in the buildings of children that are referred for difficulties within the building. And we're also looking at our attendance data. So, when we do that, we look at all of this data together. Some schools are using their mental health, we all have school-based mental health teams now. They're using their school-based mental health teams in order to discuss this data, and a lot of them are looking at this data within their ILTs. And so, decisions are made two different ways. Through the building-based mental health team, they review all of the data, and then they talk about tiered interventions for the students, and then through individual student support meetings. So, student classroom data is brought to the team to discuss what's going on for particular students. So, these are more specific to a student that's having difficulties. A teacher can bring them to a student support meeting where we'll look at the data, not just the classroom data, but also our mental health data. And then, based on the discussions, we might make different recommendations. It could include a reset room plan, which I'll talk about, academic RTI, so if the student is struggling, we might give them some academic support, or tiered groups. So, we have tiered groups running in all of our buildings at this time. We do have some current limitations with regard to looking at all of our mental health and SEL data. We're looking currently at consistency across the district regarding our student support meetings and our building-based mental health teams. Different buildings run them a little bit differently, so hopefully, within the next year, we'll get everybody consistently running them pretty similarly. We really want to work on understanding the analysis of and the collection of the data, because it's very important that we're data-driven, and we really want to make sure that everybody is looking at the data in the same way. And we want to have consistency and fidelity in the implementation of the interventions that we're putting into place. That includes the reset room and how we use the reset room, but also our tiered groups. And then, we want to start to implement, we are going to do some training at the end of this academic year with our school counselors on progress monitoring. How are you progress monitoring the students within the groups that we're doing? Some additional supports that we currently have going right now in the area of SEL and mental health, we do have the current new partnership with Manit Health, which does include some behavioral health support and bridge appointments as needed, because what everybody is finding in the community is accessing mental health services right now for young people, particularly young people that have mass health, is pretty difficult. There's a six-month to a year wait for a lot of counseling appointments. So, Manit is offering bridge appointments for young people with regard to mental health, but also if young people come out of the hospital and need a bridge appointment in order to help with medications and things along those lines. This is a very helpful service currently. We want to grow, we are growing sustainability with the provision of clinical supervision to our staff currently. So, a lot of our school adjustment counselors come into the district with a mental health degree, but they are not independently licensed yet. So, one of the things that we're doing is we're growing our sustainability within the district to provide mental health care by providing them with licensed supervision so that they can seek independent licensure. We have partnered with Suffolk University for a restorative practice pilot. So, we have several buildings that are attending six trainings on Saturdays from last month through June, looking at restorative practices for all students, restorative practices for problem-solving, so when we're having difficulties, using restorative practices, and then restorative discipline will be the final training. We have staffed reset rooms in all of our buildings at this point in time. We are staffing all of our reset rooms with a tutor and a school social worker in order to work with students. So, this is a tiered intervention for any student in the building. We have a Bright collaboration at the high school. A grant was written and received. So, the Bright program opened in one of our reset rooms at the high school. This is a transition for young people with significant mental health issues as they're transitioning from hospitals or to avoid another hospital stay. They're able to use this space within the school building in order to support their mental health. And then, we also have a trauma-informed cohort pilot through DESI at the elementary level with two of our elementary schools. And what's that looking at is trauma-informed practices within the building. So, we have two cohorts, one at Bennett and one here at Pol, that are working with someone through DESI to get trauma-informed practices within their buildings for all teachers and educators. So, I just wanted to kind of go over a little bit of the reset room, because that is one of the new tiered interventions for this year. Every building has a reset room. Currently, I put up here the numbers of students that are currently utilizing the reset space on a daily basis. So, these are students who have gone through the student support process, and there's a plan in place for how they utilize the space. Some children may be in there for half a math, some student might be in there for lunch, some student might be in there for a group. Everybody's plan is individualized based on that child's needs. The space is also utilized as an alternative to discipline. So, rather than suspending a student, we will use that as an alternative to discipline so that the student is still receiving supports from a social worker, but also an academic person to help them with their work, so they're not home. At times, for youth in distress, so if we have students that are having kind of big issues, and we need some support for them, we might use the reset room for that. And then, it's also a place where we're doing a lot of social groups or lunch groups for our students. I just put some little tidbits in here, so I reached out to all of the people that are working in the reset room. They provide a lot of data. I am a very big data collection person, so they have been collecting data on our students left and right. But, I also wanted some qualitative data. So, we have some students that were utilizing the space twice daily. They were having behaviors included leaving the classroom. They weren't returning after their breaks. They had a lot of dysregulation. And when they were going into the reset room, they were working with the school social worker on school expectations and how you behave in school, but also on being flexible and being flexible thinking. And now, they're currently staying in the classroom and following all school expectations along with being flexible with very minimal use of the reset room. So, our goal isn't always to transition them out, but for some students, it's to give them the services that they need so that they can stay in the classroom more, because we want our kids in the classroom learning. Another student used the reset space for over two hours a day. In addition, our, our staff can also push into the classrooms for support, so they could be utilizing the reset room with the social worker, and then the reset room might start, a person might push into the classroom and kind of be in the classroom as a support for that student so that they don't have to come out as often. And now, this student is currently just using it for 15-minute check-ins. So, again, we're seeing a lot of success. We had students with significant mental health issues that used it as a safe space since the beginning of the year. They've made improvement not only with their socialization, but their academic grades, because our goal is to then look at the data. Do, are they having less difficulties within the classroom, but also, how are their grades? Are they attending school regularly? And when they're attending school, are they being successful? So, in your handout, there's, you know, several of these kind of success stories at different levels. We're having success, success at all levels. And what do successes from tiered support look like? Basically, we see increased engagement with learning and overall time on learning, so we have a lot less children out of the classroom. Increased ability to tolerate frustration and regulate their emotions, because that is a lot of the reasons why our students are leaving classroom. We want to see decreased suspensions. We want to increase expected social interactions, but not just with other kids, but with the adults that they're working with. And then, we want to provide space and opportunity for young people to reframe, refocus, repair, and reengage with learning. So, that's our goal from this tiered support. So, the next steps that, kind of my goal going forward, we really want to do a lot of walkthroughs with our Mind Up curriculum, which is K through seven. It's our tier-one intervention, to make sure that we are implementing it with fidelity across all the district. We want to look at our grade-level meetings, because currently, we do grade-level meetings. But, we want to do grade-level meetings with our counseling staff. We're switching gears on how we work with our school counselors. We want to meet with them at their grade level for group planning to ensure that we're consistently implementing our tiered interventions across the district. We want to really support our teachers to embed skills within daily practices within a classroom, so a lot of professional development in that area. We want to review the data from all of this information that we're getting, and then we want to do that on a consistent basis. We don't want to just do it once we implement a screening. We also want to be doing it pretty, like, consistently throughout the school year. And then, we want to look at formal and informal data, like observations of generalization of skills. One of the things that we, we will be working on with our school counselors is, we run a group for 12 weeks. We don't just run a group, teach the skills, and send them on the way. We then go into the lunchroom to make sure that they can take the skills that we're teaching them and that they're actually utilizing those skills, that they know how to take the skills and utilize them. So, we really want to start to collect some data on the generalization of the skills that we're teaching. And for the last several years, we've been running a mental health boot camp in June for our school counselors, our school adjustment counselors, our school counselors, and our psychologists. It's the last five days after school that they're required to work. We have a ton of different places come in and do professional development. So, we surveyed all of these people, and we asked them what they're interested in learning or what they feel like they need more support around, and then are gathering people to come in and provide professional development in those areas. But, we've also included in this data collection. They just did a PD, this last PD, on group, running groups and collecting data. We have that person coming back in June to then follow up with our school counselors about, okay, you implemented this information, you collected data, now what are you going to do with it? So, we're also going to do follow-ups with our professional developments that we've already done to make sure that people are implementing them, but also understanding what they're supposed to be doing. And I think that's it.
That was a lot of information.
Yes.
I talked fast. We tried to do it as fast as we can. So, great, no questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for that comprehensive presentation. We appreciate it. Mrs. Shavz?
Thank you, all of you, and all the special ed supports and teachers and staff that help you. Can you go back to slide number one, please?
Number one?
Yes. I know you went through this slide very quickly.
I know, I'm sorry.
But, I think it's really important to point out what an increase from 2016 to 2023, that you've made a 21% increase in students.
Oh, I love my mathematician.
In students passing. I also think that you need to make note when you use this presentation that on 2020, that 96.30% is an anomaly, because it is COVID year. And so, the criteria of how teachers were grading students at that time was very different.
Well, it was also, don't mean to entourage you, but it was also the year where MCAS was not a requirement.
Right.
So, I apologize for not highlighting that. That was last year's highlight?
Yeah, and I think that should be noted if you use it, because, because then it explains even more so what a big jump you guys have made. And it's everybody. It's from, it's from preschool all the way up to high school, the supports that have been in place for these students. That is a huge jump, and I think that was just sort of brushed aside very quickly, and I think that that is really important. And if we compare it to what the state is doing, the state has been pretty flat in, in, in their increases. I mean, they're, they don't have much of an increase, and we have a huge increase with 21%. So, I would say that it's kudos to the whole staff and make sure that you send that on to, you know, everybody in your department from the school committee, because that's an impressive increase.
It is. And that middle, those middle numbers, that's the adjusted graduation rate. So, that includes all our summer graduates. That includes other kids that weren't accounted in the original one. So, like I said, I'm very proud of the work, because, like you said, Mrs. Shavz, 2016, we were 67.4. This was an area that DESI identified. Some of our, it impacts some of our 240 funding. We had to go through Making Money Matters. We had to designate 2% of our 240 funding to work on increasing the graduation rate. So, that was, that was a lot of effort by predecessor, predecessor Judy Mulrooney was involved with and past administrators to get us where we are today. So, it's a huge, it's a huge village shout-out, like there's, everybody had hands in these kids.
I agree, and it's, it's special ed.
And you too, by the way.
Well, yes, it's special ed staff as well as regular ed staff.
Yes, it's everybody.
A lot of those students do do inclusion, so you have lots of teachers working with them. So, I think you brushed over your own accolade on how well you did, so I just wanted to make sure that we pointed that out. So, thank you.
Thank you. I am very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shavz. Anyone else?
Oh.
So, I have, oh, sorry, Isaiah, please. Mr. Wendell.
So, usually, I don't, I don't add anything, but I would like to commend you and your staff from a student's point of view. I know, I've heard from students who have visited these reset rooms and who have experienced the staff within them, and I've heard that it really does help them. And as a student, I do appreciate all the work that you and your staff do and how passionate you are about the students within our district. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, and you guys are all worth it.
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Anyone else? Mr. Pawlowski?
Thank you, guys, for the great presentation. It was like drinking from the fire hose. It was quite a lot of information. No, but it, but it's great. I mean, like, our kids need all this help, so I'm glad that it's all there. I just had one question, so echoing what, what Isaiah said, I've heard nothing but great things about these reset rooms. Like, I've been excited about it since we first heard about the concept. So, you got, you guys showed that, like, daily, daily beneficiaries of the room range from like 10 to 23. Do you guys have an idea of, like, what's the capacity? Like, how much can each of those rooms, like, handle? Like, how would you know whether you'd need, like, another one at a, at a school with, like, so many kids? Like, do you have an idea of that yet?
We've, we've capped the capacity at any given point in time to 12 students in the room at one time, just because we want to make sure that the students' needs get met. But, what we're finding is, and when I look at the data, they're, the staff in the reset room are doing a very nice job working with the student support teams to make sure that when a student needs something, if there are a lot of kids in the room, they'll alter scheduling to make sure that the kids' needs are getting met. So, I think we can, we have a lot of wiggle room with regard to how to play with scheduling to make sure we can, at this time, keep what we're, what we have in place and continue to utilize it.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? So, I just have a couple of closing comments. I was whispering to the superintendent earlier, and we see some new faces in the audience that I have never met before and admire their talent and their expertise, too. So, thank you, Ms. Commerford, for coming before us tonight. Ms. Commerford?
Mrs. Lund.
No, Ms. Commerford?
Nope, Mrs. Lund.
Mrs. Commerford.
Lund, I'm sorry, Lund, okay.
Sorry, my, when I went to a slide, I commented Ms. Commerford. She's not here.
Okay, Ms. Lund.
Because they're the unified coaches. I apologize for not making that distinction.
No problem. So, anyway, that's my remark, but I was whispering to the superintendent of the talent that we have throughout the district, and seeing new faces before us is always helpful. So, for the last seven years, I'm not afraid to admit, it's a subject area that I have no expertise in. I am still trying to figure it out, because there's so many moving parts, and tonight's presentation kind of gave me a little bit more in-depth understanding of everything that comes together to make our school system the best that it is. But, with this new IEP form that is. But with this new IEP form that the state just implemented, help me out with that. Is that going to improve the process? Is it?
The intention is to, really, it's, it's really about student outcomes, and making things equitable and inclusive across. So the form, while the law hasn't changed, and many of the pieces that are in the current form are going to still be in that form, they're just arranged a little differently. I think, and for us, one of the biggest new pieces in the form is that there's an actual spot to talk about our multilanguage learners. Because oftentimes, Ms. Lund talked about it when we do the evaluation process, about evaluating in their native, their own language, and making, if, we don't, not all tests are in every language, so we have to use interpreter, interpreters and things. But really talking about that language acquisition, to make sure, one, we're not misidentifying multilanguage learners as having a disability, and not under identifying. So it's trying to find that balance. So there's an actual spot where we have to talk about it. We talk about, and I wish Delilah was here for this, because she could explain this piece better. But we actually talk about how they perform on access, what their language needs are versus their disability needs, if it's related to that. The goal is to bring the teams together, and it's an opportunity to, like with anything, right? When you just start doing things, you can kind of come complacent, or just, you know, you, so it's an opportunity for, to refresh and rejuvenate how that team processes, to make sure parents feel more included, teachers feel more included. It's very data-driven, which it always should have been, but now it's really data-driven. So we, we're working with our special education staff about data collection, and on the general ed level, that's already being addressed and worked on with our coaches, and really using data to drive our decisions. So I do think it's going to improve the process. It's going to be a rocky year for this, because there's going to be some bumps. There's going to be some, our special educators are already starting to feel a little overwhelmed about, like, it's a new form, and it's changed, and we're going to just continue to support them as much as we can. So we've done the training once. Now, now we're going to go away for summer, and folks are going to be like, what? So we do have a plan in place to refresh everybody and stuff, you know, from the fall before they start to school. So we are going to support, and we're going to, we're going to walk slowly in this process.
Secretary Fagan, I had an opportunity to be interviewed by a couple of folks from DESI, what, last week, or two weeks ago. And I was the first one to say to them, I says, you know, DESI sometimes doesn't serve the districts well enough, meaning that they throw stuff against the wall and see if it sticks. And you folks are the people that are the bearers of this new message. And if it doesn't work, you know, we're kind of going through our motions to make it work. So I, you know, love to hear if it does work eventually, because if it doesn't, we need to communicate that to DESI, too. Because we don't need to make your life any harder than what it already is. So thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support. And I just want to give a shout-out with the reset spaces and the work that Dr. Watt has done. Like, that was a huge commitment for the district to make. And I'm glad, we knew it was paying off, but we wanted to make sure we could demonstrate that. So thank you so much.
Superintendent has closing remarks.
No, I'll just be, I'll be brief. So I don't think people back home, or may possibly even some of the board members, understand or recognize how heavy of a lift it is to train about 1,000 educators. When you think about who is going to have access, who's going to be touching the IEP. So I just want to commend Mrs. Marne, Director Marne Han and her team for that heavy lift. And also just remind folks sitting at the table, 22% of our 8,233 students qualify for special education services. And that exceeds the state average. So I know sometimes my board will receive phone calls regarding the IEP process, or certain outcomes of team meetings, but 22% of our students do receive special education services. And as, Ms. Lund, sorry, I was the one who gave Dr. DeMello the wrong name, so I apologize. That's on me.
It's his fault, not mine.
I, I openly admit when I'm wrong, as my wife tells me all the time that I'm wrong. But I do want to say, it was helpful for me, and I hope helpful for the school board to understand, you know, that it is a very well-thought process, and it is a team decision, and we don't just make these decisions, you know, on a fly. It's a very thoughtful process. And I also commend the committee for having the foresight six, seven, eight years ago to start implementing team chairs. Because it has, we have reaped the benefits, similar to how we're reaping the benefits of the, of the, of the reset rooms, which this committee supported to the tune of $600,000 during the previous fiscal cycle. And the last thing I would, I would like to just commend is, I love Dr. Watt's use of the term flexible. Even as adults, sometimes we have to remember to be flexible in whatever roles that we serve in, or when we're working with students, at home with our own children, or even when it comes to ourselves. Because that is a great skill. And we, and a lot, a lot of times, that is a skill that can sometimes lead to dysregulated, unregulated behavior. So I love that term, and you're probably going to hear me using that term a lot. So outstanding presentation. We do great work, and I can, and I think you sell yourself short by not pointing out that we've had districts actually reach out to Taunton to come up, to come in and schedule visits to see our work.
Thank you again. Have a good night. Next up on the agenda, we have the superintendent's book study, The Governance Core School Board, Superintendents and Schools Working Together by Campbell and Fulan.
So before I jump into the book study, I just want to make the board aware that our facilitator, Tony Bent, has actually submitted an application to the MASs/MASC Joint Conference to share our work as a school committee regarding the retreats, and also to share the work we're doing around the book study. So I, I won't go into the book study, other than this chapter focused on me, the superintendent, which I thought was very interesting. And I spent a lot of time just thinking about my approach, because the, in the book, in chapter three, they talk about the hands-off approach as a superintendent. They talk about the, you know, the damage control superintendent approach, and then they talk about the purposeful approach. So in the, in chapter two, it talked about the board's role when it comes to governance. In chapter three, it talks about the superintendent's role when it comes to governance and their work with the school board. So with that being said, now I did provide you with some guiding questions, but if anybody through Dr. DeMello wants to entertain or share their thoughts on the chapter, that's great. I know we're up against the clock, so if we want to, you know, move ahead, that's fine, too.
We have three readers that want to comment. They'll start with Mrs. Fagan. We haven't heard from you yet tonight.
Oh.
I took notes again.
A plus.
Huh?
A plus.
No, I, you know, I found it interesting, but I, what concerned me about that chapter, all right, and I could see pieces of you in everything. You know what I mean? Because we've had...
Sometimes I feel like I'm a piece of shit.
Well, we all do. You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's par for the course. But it kind of bothered me that this focused on the states of California, Oregon, and I think it was either North or South Carolina.
Carolina.
All right, all right, one of the Carolinas. And as I was reading this stuff, I, I thought about all the things that we get pressured with, whether it's when they have to do these IEPs, you know, the state turns around, and now you're going to change this, and you're going to do that. And, and as Greg said, that's part of the conversation we had with them. But I don't see how, you know, I don't see any of that overreach into what these people were doing. So they pretty much could do what they thought was right. But I did find a consistency in what they had to say. But it still bothers me that, I wonder what it would be like in those states if they had such, that kind of government overview continuously, like it happens in this state. But I found that what I really liked were the people who want, the one guy said, "No trustee will ever read something in the newspaper without hearing about it from here first." I thought that was important. Keeps, keeps the board updated on the, by, on the key strategic issues. Important that the, the full board is informed. And I remembered, you know, some of the things that Dr. Croto used to, something happened, he'd call us all up individually. I just remember things like that. We had a woman superintendent to, that said it was important to be supportive of the board, watching their backs. And there's times I think that even we need that, because they realize that we have to answer to the public, too. And I think that's a difficult thing to do sometimes, because they'll say, well, why did this happen? And sometimes you really just don't know. But she also felt that she still works for the children, because she was a teacher to start with. The thing about a governance structure with emphasis on protocols and norms, we do that. We keep in touch with students involved by, with structural school visits, which we did today. Isaiah, I was there with you. And learning programs are being implemented in real time with real children. And it says the biggest mistake a superintendent can make is, never lie to the board, either by misinformation or by omission. You must confront the ugly. And I said, sometimes things do get ugly. And one of them said that believes that even in cases where he is not required to get board approval, he often boards the, gets the board's things by making sure the board never hears about a program, an issue from someone else. The no surprises thing, and we talk about that all the time. But, you know, no surprises work both ways. I've, I've said to newer members on the board, if something is bothering you, don't drop a bomb at a meeting. You know, have a private talk beforehand. I think that's the best way to handle things. And I liked the one person that said, "The most ha, the board must have confidence in the info it receives. Governance is chess, not checkers. Everyone should be thinking three steps ahead," which I thought was another important thing. So I, I think, I think there was a lot in there that was important, but there's also, the onus is on both of us. And I think if we both find a mutual respect, we'll be all right. And that's what I liked about it. But like I said, I felt kind of weird that it didn't involve some of the states like ours, that really do have a lot of influence on us. So that's it.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Very, very well said. Mrs. Shavz, you had a comment?
She did the quote, she did the quote. Quote that I liked about the checkers and the chess. I thought that was important. And, and trying to look three steps ahead, so you, so you're better prepared when something comes your way, which I thought was important.
Ms. Santos, anything tonight?
I can't go away without saying anything.
Of course not. That's why I called you.
No, and she, you don't really summarize it all really well, but I think it was easier reading, because it wasn't about my role on the board. So I was kind of like, oh, I don't have to, no, I had to pay attention, obviously, but it was like, all right, this is more about what he has to do, right? But I think it helped me, obviously, new here, understanding the role in general, but that, and I don't mean to be cheesy, but I feel like we're kind of lucky. If you think about what some other school boards have to go through and things like that. And again, I know I'm new, and somewhat naive in that, but as Christine, Mrs. Fagan said, I see little bits, I saw little bits of you throughout reading that, right? Like, as far as having the purpose in mind, and then the part about how you can sometimes disagree. I, it made me think of the budget meeting last week, where there was some, you know, sometimes there's contention, right? And I think maybe that's just me, like, oh, I hate conflict, you know. But I think seeing adults, being able to have that contentious debate, and still get along, and, you know, I think that's a really good, just lesson to put forward, I think, just, not just for governance or what have you, but just adulthood, and for kids, and all of that other stuff, that you can disagree with certain things, or contend with certain things, but that, at the end of the day, it's still a team. So that was one of the things that...
That'd be flexible.
Yes. Yes, flexibility. But that was one of the things that came to mind for me, so...
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Anyone else? Nope. Well, A plus for Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Shavz, and Ms. Santos.
It's June, June, the June 1st meeting, or the June, 1st meeting in June, chapter four, folks.
That means you, Mr. Viera.
I forgot.
All right, next up, we have administrative business, staffing report. Which is the committee?
Receive and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Next up, Taunton Public Schools Staffing Update. Which is the committee? Questions, comments?
Receive and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Taunton Public Schools District Enrollment Update. Comments, suggestions? Yes, Mrs. Shavz?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. I just want to tie this in with what's coming up next, because the numbers don't match up. So I don't know if there's a typo somewhere, because... And these numbers here, and again, I'm looking at the 12th grade that I had questioned before. If I look at the 12th grade on the September 20th, we're at 467. And the next thing coming up is the, is the increased development impact on schools that has the similar tables. But when we look at the table on the fourth page of that set, it says that, when we look at September 15th, which is only five days off, we're at 545 students. So how did five days later, we were down to 467 students? So...
That's because the alternative high school wasn't listed.
Okay, so they were in with them. Okay, that makes sense then. Thank you.
Excellent question, Mrs. Shavz. Mr. Viera?
I think actually this one, I'm going to, this is in regards to increased development and impact on the schools.
So, yeah, we can accept the first one. So for item three, which is the committee?
Receive and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have increased development and impact on schools. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page one of the communication to Mr. Abreu, it's cited that there's 468 three- and four-year-old students attending the pre-K program. But when you look at, on the enrollment page, as a 327, 2024, it cites 428. It's a 40-student difference. I'm just wondering which one's accurate. I don't know if it's a typo, or if...
No, I'll drill down, because I did pull numbers off the DESI website, and I did pull numbers off of our Open Architect dashboard. I wanted to make sure that when Mr. Abreu, he doesn't have access to Open Architect. That is something that only administrators use. I wanted to make sure that they had a source that they could use, if they wanted to back into the numbers, or go to the site, that they could reference. So I will confirm the numbers. But that come, those numbers in this report are coming off DESI.
Okay, I, I appreciate it, Superintendent. Thank you. And I, I did see here on one of your communications that you noted the increase is due to our pre-K program, which has expanded, and mostly due to our virtual academy. So those are important things to know. Thank you.
So any action required on that, Mr. Viera?
Motion, receive and place on file. Did you already send this to Mr. Abreu?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what, yeah, that's what I meant. So the update has been sent to the planning board?
Yeah, it was sent to them, oh, this isn't data, I apologize. This was sent to them via email, shortly after I received the communication from their secretary. And then she, and she did confirm that she received, that she received the information I sent. And I did offer to meet with them if they have any questions or concern.
Excellent, thank you. Which is the committee?
Receive and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Next up, we have review of open meeting law complaint, see enclosure.
Just a point, just a point of information, it might be wise to just have a recommendation or motion to approve the recommendations as noticed.
I'll accept that in the form of a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Fagan?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Superintendent.
I would recommend that the school committee adopt the recommendations laid forward by Attorney Matt Costa, to make sure that we comply with the open meeting law.
I'll second that motion. Thank you.
You probably should take a vote, just have it on record.
So Mrs. Fagan motioned, Mr. Viera second. All in favor? Does this need to be roll call, or just right?
I would do roll call, just to be safe.
Mrs. Fagan, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavz?
Yes.
Mr. Pawlowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes, thank you. Next up, expansion of enrollment at Taunton Public Virtual Academy. Superintendent, please.
Yeah, so some good news. As I think I stated earlier in the year, we're at capacity with the virtual school. And I think, as we heard during the high school advisory, students mentioned how their friends who are attending the virtual academy have been very successful. So in the future, we are going to be coming to the school committee to get your authorization. It'll probably be at the June 1st meeting, or possibly the second meeting in May. I'll have Mrs. Rodriguez, the principal, come before you to make her presentation. And I will, I will be requesting from the school committee to expand the virtual school to 150 students next year. And we believe that at 150, there will be no increase to our full-time staffing. But Mrs. Rodriguez will make, will make that presentation to you at a, at a later date. So this is just to make you aware of what's coming, and the process, and that it will require a school committee vote.
Mrs. Shavz?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Can you ask Mrs. Rodriguez, when she does do the presentation, how many students she's turned away, and if she can find out where they went?
So like the waitlist?
Yeah, if it's just the waitlist, or, yeah, it'd be interesting to see. We don't want to lose them out of the district, so where are they going? Because, you know, at some point, maybe we may have to increase it more, not necessarily next year, but we may have to make it even larger than what it is, and add additional staff. So it'd be interesting to see that data.
So when Mrs. Rodriguez comes before the board, you're going to see a four-year plan to eventually cap out at 300.
Excellent.
But we're going to grow incrementally.
Excellent.
Sounds good, thank you. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there going to be any additional cost, or is the capturing the students that we're losing going to offset the cost, or is that going to be part of our presentation?
Yeah, we believe that at 150 students with the current staffing, we don't need to add any staff.
So it'll be, add zero cost?
Add, well, the current cost. We're not, no additional costs.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Superintendent.
Great. Anyone else? Which is the committee?
Motion, receive and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have future of legal counsel. Basically, this is a discussion item. I believe Superintendent could better... I believe superintendent can better update on that, please.
Yeah, I believe it was during the budget workshop that this came up. And it was, there was a motion that was seconded to have a discussion regarding the future of legal counsel for the Taunton Public Schools. So this would be a discussion that the school committee would have to provide us with some direction with regards to the current, the current state of our legal counsel. Currently, the school department utilizes Gay and Gay. And they've been the legal counsel for, you know, since I've been in the Taunton Public Schools. However, our legal counsel, Attorney Gay, is beginning to transition to his retirement. So if this is a discussion that the school committee wishes to have now, we can have it now. If this is something that you want to have at a later date, we can have it at a later date. But again, right now, we are currently using Gay and Gay. And again, Attorney David Gay is transitioning towards retirement. So it's the committee wishes to authorize the school department to continue with Gay and Gay. We can continue with Gay and Gay. If the school committee wishes to put out an RFP, which Gay and Gay could also bid on, and we can seek bids from other legal counsel to deal with the labor side of what we, the labor side of the House, because we have Lyons and Rogers, who does the student service legal side. Again, that's something that we would need, I would need authorization from the school committee in the form of motion on which direction to go.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the superintendent's been pulled in a few different directions regarding labor management issues, which shouldn't be his, his role, right? I mean, should be HR or...
We all, we all play, we all play a role.
Right.
But again, it's, from my perspective, is recognizing that Attorney Gay, who's been an outstanding, you know, legal mind and of service at the Taunton Public Schools, recognizing that he's retiring in what are the wishes of the committee. I'm always involved in legal matters, labor matters. But we also do need to refer to legal for their support, their guidance when it comes, when it comes to legal matters to make sure that we don't introduce a liability or put the school system in a liable situation.
Absolutely. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If RFP is put out, who, what's the process to review those? Do they go to Finance and Law? Does the whole committee review them? Again, maybe I'm thinking out loud here. I don't know what past practice is. I imagine Gay and Gay's probably been our attorney for 30 years or more.
Probably longer. So I know when we did the special education RFP for Lyons and Rogers, the leadership team put together a RFP with a rubric. We reviewed the rubric. We brought the findings back to the committee. I don't recall if it went to Finance and Law or if it came to the whole committee. But I know we brought the findings back with a recommendation based on the rubric, which was shared with the, with the committee. And we provided a rationale. Because in this aspect, legal counsel will represent the school committee. It matters, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have school committee members, whether it's no special programs, long-range finance and law, to be involved or, or school committee members who have an interest in labor management or legal affairs, to be involved in the process with my leadership team, if that's the wishes of the committee.
Yeah, I think Mr. Viera makes an excellent point that it should kind of come out of Finance and Law. I think that's what the subcommittee entertains is, or, well, or combination of both. We could have two, we have two subcommittees already established. We can actually meet separately, as we always do, and push forward a first and second choice, for example, and then bring it to the leadership team. I think that's where it could, could start. But it's up to all you folks.
I mean, that's something that I would be comfortable with, having the school committee involved in the, in the process and, you know, making that decision. Because it is very important, and I know the labor management side's a priority, but it's also, you know, our attorney as a body. So I think it's important for us to be involved in that. So I think that's a, a great idea. It's just a matter of how to craft it and finalize it, again, if it's the pleasure of this board.
Sure. So that's exactly it. So if the pleasure of the board is to send out an RFP and then responses get sent to Finance and Law and Rules? And each subcommittee pushes forward maybe two, two top candidates?
What about the leadership's team and the...
Well, yeah, two leadership, right. I mean, two leadership. We're not going to make the decision.
So, so one we would need, we knew, okay. I hear what Dr. DeMello was saying, I believe that would make sense. We will develop the RFP. We will, we will publish the RFP, collect the results, make two copies, one for the Rules Committee, one for Finance and Law. Those committees will meet, schedule public meetings and to review the work and then forward the recommendations to the superintendent. And we will compile both groups, along with the leadership team recommendations, and have one overall recommendation at our future meeting.
And for members, I mean, you can always attend a subcommittee meeting. It's not restricted, you just don't have a vote. But you're welcome to attend, like most of us do. So it's definitely transparent process, I believe. Mrs. Fagan?
In, in that process, are you looking for somebody that'll be here full-time? Like in a role like Marguerite played? Or you just, you want somebody that just comes in and...
Somebody that can address legal matters.
Okay. I wasn't sure what we were, we were going to be looking for there.
And I think that we still need, you know, Attorney Gay, if he's willing, to be on counsel, on retainer or some kind. Because of his expertise in collective bargaining, I believe that would be prudent of us.
And also because of his institutional knowledge.
Right. Like I said, yeah, especially, yeah. Mr. Viera, you had your hand up?
Um, no, that's what I was going to ask, if we were still going to keep him on as a consultant.
As long as he's willing to stay, I'd love to have him, yes.
And again, that, that role would be similar to the one that he has now as far as negotiating personnel matters, any advisory matters. Okay.
Good. What are the wishes?
Motion to authorize a superintendent to put out an RFP for legal counsel with the process that was laid out in this discussion.
Second.
Clear to everybody? Second, okay? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have field trip requests. First is the World Language and History, Spain and Portugal trip. See enclosure. So I must apologize to Allison Golda because she did send me a comprehensive, I think it was a 90-day window that I had requested, and I haven't responded to her, but I'm responding now publicly, that I'm very happy and satisfied that what has been, the progress that's been going along with this trip is, it's very comfortable. I've checked all, you know, dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, and to my understanding, it looks perfectly fine. So what are the wishes of the committee? I'm sorry, Ms. Shavz?
I just have a question on, on the field trips in general, in both of them. Chaperones. No information on the chaperones, on who they are. We know how many people, so like, well, Ally and Chris are going, but there are four chaperones. So there are only two. So who are the other two?
We typically don't provide the names of the chaperones, but it's usually staff, in some cases, parents. And we usually try to stick to a 10-to-1 ratio.
And they're all core checked?
You cannot go on a field trip unless you are core checked. And I believe, is fingerprinting required as well? Just for, just for employees?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And they're flying with my favorite airline, Tapier Portugal. So it's got to be a great trip. Which is the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Item B, which is the Taunton High School Band Dallas-Fort Worth Tour. Now, this is not until 2025. Am I correct?
Correct. They're just seeking preliminary approval because it involves a lot of fundraising for the group and to the boosters and the, and the parents.
Yeah, my only fear, you know, is a progress report as we're going along. You know, I love these companies that are global companies that, you know, basically screwed Taunton Public Schools of $70,000 a few years ago. So I'll just say it as it is. So I just got to be very careful that we have all our financial, you know, policies in place that we're not... No, I know, but believe me, the big ones go down too, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, but I also know that, I, I agree, and, but that company that we dealt with during COVID will never do business in the Taunton Public Schools as long as I'm the superintendent of this district.
Right, I understand. But in my world, a lot of these companies have been merging and there's subsets of this and that. So just as long as we protect the financial interest of our students and the district is what I'm really concerned with, booking it this far in advance. So just maybe a progress report along the way.
Progress reports, updates?
Yeah, like, like, like Allison Golda did, yes. Yes, please, I think that'd be nice.
Please follow the example.
Okay. Which is the committee?
Move approval to move forward.
This is a, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fagan?
Move an approval to move forward on that. I don't know how else to say it.
Motion to approve is presented. Motion to approve preliminary.
Motion to approve preliminary.
With regular updates.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have a wonderful, colorful org chart in front of us that...
Thank you for the long slide.
I hope everybody had a chance to view.
So, so what I, what I would ask is, take it, take your time because you had a very small version of this in your packet. So take this home with you at the next meeting. If, we'll put it as an agenda item. If there's any information that's incorrect or any information that needs to be updated, just we'll, we'll discuss it at that meeting so that we can make the updates for the June 1st, or the, the first meeting in June, or the second meeting in June. I don't expect you, based on the version that you received, to have any, any feedback or any suggestions now. But if you do, we'll take note and make them, but I think it might be a better item to discuss at a future meeting.
Yep, I, I will have some comments at that time. So any, anybody else right now?
Nope.
Which is the committee on that item?
Motion to discuss, did you say the June or the...
I don't know, the first meeting, the first meeting in June.
I think it's...
June 5th?
Yeah, I believe so.
June 5th, yes. Oh, no, June 1st. June, regular school, hold on, it says regular school.
And if you laminate, laminate, it'll make a nice place, Matt.
It actually would.
It says June.
Colorful.
Six, five? Okay, you may want to change this, Mr. Cabral.
Motion placed on the June 5th agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Next up, we have Subcommittee Reports. First up, we have Elementary Subcommittee. Mr. Laurel is absent. Mr. Pawlowski, are you taking lead on that?
I sure am.
Thank you, Chairman.
So to today, May 1st, commencing at 5:04 PM, we held a meeting of the Elementary Subcommittee, President, or myself and Ms. Santos. The, the purpose of the meeting was to receive the school improvement plan for Easton Elementary School, delivered by Claudine Nichols. So I have to commend Claudine Nichols for giving a remarkable report. A ton of work by her and her staff. And one of the most impressive things, Ms. Santos and I were impressed. We get these packets of paper all the time that are pieces of paper that come from Word documents that have links to websites and reports and graphs and all that, which we obviously can't access from a piece of paper. So Ms. Nichols actually printed out all the data that applied to the links and she kind of highlighted it. So I thought that was pretty cool. I appreciated it, we were able to see it. So, you know, I, I can't do justice summarizing everything that we spoke about, but some of the highlights were, and it goes along with what we were hearing a lot of today. Mrs. Nichols stressed that her staff is really seeing the great benefits of the reset rooms. They gave a couple anecdotes of children that have really turned things around, really seen that benefit, and, and the staff is really loving it. So they, they're grateful for, for that being an option. And the primary focus of her and her instructional learning team is number one on writing. They showed us the, the MCAS results for writing that are, they're not where we want to be. So there's a very concerned effort district-wide, you know, not just at Easton or Mount Dury, all, all along, targeted resources to help these kids with their writing and help bring that up. And then the second primary focus is social-emotional learning, where, you know, that's where the reset rooms and everything else comes in. So, yep, excellent, excellent work going on at Easton Elementary School. They presented us with a very colorful handout with, with pictures, including a sneak preview of the new dedication of the, of the school in memory of Corporal Raymond R. LePont. So excellent, excellent presentation. And the meeting came to a close at 4:55 PM. And that is the end of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Which is the committee?
Receive and place on file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Special Program, Special Programs. Chairman Shavz?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. As Chairperson of the Special Program Subcommittee, I'm notifying you that the Subcommittee met on Wednesday, April 17th, 2024, at 3:10 PM. All members of the Subcommittee were present, which included Mr. Enos, Mr. Laurel, and myself, along with other school committee members that, that attended, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Viera, and Dr. DeMello. The purpose of this meeting was to review the various Taunton Public Schools student supports and special programs, consider an action plan to effectively distribute this information to parents, caregivers, teachers, and students, and discuss any concerns or new business. Mr. Cabral, Mrs. Monahan, and Mrs. Hoy presented a slideshow that reviewed the various Taunton Public Schools programs currently available and the criteria for access of each of the programs. In particular, we discussed how this information is either missing from the Taunton Public School website, or it's difficult to retrieve. Mr. Cabral explained that this came to light after meeting with both myself and to discuss special programs, as well as with a parent who was looking for resources for their student. So Cynthia Johnson, the Communication Coordinator, explained as a result of these conversations, she is now in the process of aligning each program with the strategic plan. Ms. Johnson described in detail how she is reorganizing, updating, and refining this information on the district's website. Pages will now include up-to-date program descriptions, qualifying criteria, contact information, resources, and relevant links to make it more visible and user-friendly for those trying to locate and navigate supports for students. Ms. Johnson explained the different benchmarks needed for the completion of this work. So it includes, one, separating the programs by department; two, compiling and writing updated descriptions of each program with qualifying criteria; three, identifying contact information and resources; four, creating new pages offline until work is approved to go live; five, developing QR codes for easy access to the information; and six, determining how to get this information to work in conjunction with Parent Square, which is our school and parent communication app. Ms. Johnson also indicated that District 1 Sheets would be created and available at each school, which will summarize the list of programs, where to go, and who to contact. It was agreed upon that Ms. Johnson will report the progress of this project back to us at a later meeting. Under New Business, Dr. DeMello voiced concerns regarding certain programs, Under new business, Dr. DeMello voiced concerns regarding certain programs, in particular, the TLC program at Friedman Middle School. Dr. DeMello indicated that he had been contacted by parents regarding an incident at the school, and as a result, he'd like to see each program carefully examined for its purpose, effectiveness, and performance measures. Mr. Enos made a motion, and seconded by Mr. Laurel, to refer this request to the curriculum subcommittee. Um, and the special program subcommittee ended at four oh one PM.
Very comprehensive report, Chairman Shavs. Any comments, questions? Wish to the committee. Ms. DeVera?
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. Make a motion to, uh, accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have finance and law. Today, the finance and law subcommittee met. Present were Mrs. Shavs, Mr. Viera, and myself as chair. Uh, first item on the agenda, we had a facilities update. Mrs. Monahan, uh, explained that there were two thousand sixty-nine items. Seventy-six percent were for schools, and, uh, a, a lot of open and closed, uh, orders were listed on the memo that's in your packet. Uh, that was received and placed on file unanimously. Then we had the use of facilities update. Uh, basically, uh, Mr. Viera asked a question, what an X meant in a certain box. Uh, it would mean that for that organization, we're charging, for example, a manager, uh, or a custodian, or police fire details, and many of them have unchecked boxes, which we let them use the facility in lieu of service, such as the Boys, uh, Boy Scouts, I believe it was, uh, and other organizations like that, for service-oriented, um, uh, opportunities. Uh, that facility update was received and, uh, placed on file, and it was voted unanimously. Then we had four items on the, uh, fourth quarter, a third quarter FY twenty-four budget updates. First was the FY twenty-four quarter three line item budget balancing negative lines. Uh, there was an explanation that's in your, uh, in your packet that was, um, it was comprehensive, but I, I think there was some not comprehensive enough. So, uh, unfortunately, that item was tabled to the next meeting in May, which is May fifteenth. So we'll get more information updates on those, uh, negative balancing lines, which means that, uh, any overages will be used to satisfy a negative, and it'll be a little bit clearer, more clear on the May fifteenth meeting. So that item was tabled. Next up, we have the FY twenty-four appropriation quarter three report, uh, pretty much self-explanatory on the items in front of you. Rev- revolving account quarter three report, also, uh, very, very healthy numbers, which approached five point eight million dollars, I believe. And last but not least, the FY twenty-four grants quarter three report, also, uh, very informative and in your possession. Those last three items were all voted unanimously in favor. Uh, no objections, and is, are before you right now. So on the three items that we just discussed, exclusive of the line item budget balancing negative lines, which was tabled, what are the wishes of the committee? Or questions, concerns? Yes, Ms. DeVera?
Thank you, Dr. Mo. Uh, make a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the finance and law subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Eyes have it. And last item on the agenda today was the bills payable for FY twenty-four in the amount of eight hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, there were just a couple of questions from some of the subcommittee members. Uh, one was an item that dealt with a vendor by the name of Serpro, and that item, uh, was explained by Mrs. Monahan. Uh, and it was an item, um, on a fringe, which was pretty self-explanatory, uh, on that, and that was favored, that was voted, uh, in favor unanimously by the subcommittee. So what are the wishes of the committee on the FY twenty-four, eight seventy-three, one sixty-two point six one? Or any questions?
Motion approved on the amount stated.
Second? Second by Mrs. Fagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. That's the report. Now, coming up, uh, we had a special committee of the whole meeting on April seventeenth. If you recall, that was vacation week, and at that meeting, uh, it was voted unanimously to approve the FY twenty-four, uh, warrant, uh, bills payable in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and ninety-two cents. I don't believe there were any questions or comments on that, uh, on that warrant. So what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Tack him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. And last but not least, we had a special, uh, special school committee meeting of the whole budget workshop on April twenty-fourth. Uh, I believe all members were present. Uh, there was some discussion on a preliminary budget presentation, uh, very informative, uh, a lot of questions and, and, and responses. And we will follow up with another budget workshop on May fifteenth, Superintendent, on May fifteenth, and again, open to the public. Uh, if they want to come down and, and participate in the budget workshop, they're always welcome. Uh, so that's basically the report out of the committee, the whole of the budget workshop of April twenty-fourth. Wish to the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Tack him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, uh, on the new business item, I would recommend a motion to refer to administration, uh, on item I.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Uh, next up, unfinished business, action item updates, uh, Two Hamilton Street update, see enclosure. You've all had a chance to...
Nope. Go ahead, Superintendent. So, just quickly, uh, you received a, uh, letter of the school committee chair, secretary, and long-range planning subcommittee chairperson received a communication from Building Superintendent Chris Carmichael regarding, you know, current conditions and current state of the Two Hamilton Street property with regards to the assessments that were raised during, I don't recall which meeting this took place, but he did provide updates. In summary, it appears that the, um, Building Superintendent is looking for some direction regarding the potential or the future use of the building. And the school committee, if the school committee were to acquire the building, what would be the intended use for the facility? And as a reminder, I did include the Two Hamilton Street use proposal that we presented to the city council as a refresher, in case some of you have forgotten what we had discussed.
So just for, uh, clarification purposes, I did respond to the letter, uh, today, as a matter of fact. Uh, unfortunately, I couldn't get it out sooner. Uh, it was, uh, through the superintendent's office, uh, emailed on the Taunton Public Schools letterhead. I'll provide a copy to each member before you leave tonight. I apologize, it couldn't get out sooner, but it was just drafted this afternoon. And just, just some, uh, concerns, I think that, uh, are pretty basic to be answered, and I believe that, uh, that could be addressed by Mr. Carmichael by the May fifteenth meeting. So, uh, I believe that it's best that we, as a committee, uh, individually think of best uses, uh, if we want to continue pursuing Two Hamilton Street, so that we could present at the May fifteenth meeting. So us, as a committee, would vote out of the five, the superintendent, where's that list?
It's in, it's in this.
Five, five, uh, five proposals.
The five proposals that were shared. Uh, Mr. Pawlowski?
Just a question. So these are the only five proposals we're gonna vote on? Or, because I, I, I was under the impression that we would be engaging the community, engaging different groups within the district to get, you know, various options of what, what to use. So I, I thought this was a preliminary group, so we're gonna vote on just these five?
Good question. I believe, uh, how do we arrive at those five? Does anybody recall how we arrived at those five?
Uh, that was done through, um, the leadership team, working with principals, and, um, you know, in discussions with other educational leaders. We have not polled the community, we have not polled the staff, we have not talked to the students. Uh, but today, we did hear in two advisory meetings, we did hear from kids, and they had some suggestions, which I won't discuss at this meeting. So these are five possibilities, uh, that we feel as an administrative team, leadership team, uh, would be most beneficial to the school department.
Mr. Pawlowski, you hold a sec? Okay, Mrs. Shavs?
In order to vote on one of these, I would like to see some data, like on, on why one would be better than the other, and the cost analysis of what it would cost. Because my concern is, is that if we're approving, um, a budget for next year, how much is this gonna cost with whatever one we decide to do, and how will that affect the, um, budget?
So those are all great questions, but I, I, I would think, in order to get the information that, um, Dr. DeMello referenced in his memo to Superintendent of Buildings, Chris Carmichael, I believe what is needed is determination of use. Will it be used for educational purposes? Will it be used as an early college center? Because that changes the code.
Yes, I saw that.
When it comes to Chris, Mr. Carmichael providing the information. So perhaps, and this is just a thought, perhaps we could discuss, yes, we want to see, we would like to continue discussing the facility used for educational purposes. Um, not a pre-K center, not an early college center, maybe a K through twelve education facility, because the code will be similar for K through twelve.
Ms. DeVera?
So, so the requirement, right now, it's considered a business use, not an educational use, so that falls under one classification, simply put. If you change the use back to an educational use, it falls under a whole other set of classifications, as far as ADA compliance, sprinkler systems, basic life safety, um, things like that. So I think what he's suggestion, suggesting in his report, which I have a lot of questions about, he's suggesting that he really can't fully answer the, he can't fully respond unless he knows whether we want to use it for, again, K to twelve. K to twelve falls under a different classification than college falls under, um...
And then that would lead to Mr. Pawlowski and Mrs. Santos. They gotta break this to me. Mrs. Santos is concerned about what is the use of, and Mr. Shav, that allows us, that allows us, my leadership team, to do the analysis, uh, to collect data, and then cost analysis too. So if it's gonna be K through twelve, that really narrows our focus with regards to cost and use.
Mr. Pawlowski?
Okay, so if I, if I understand correctly, we are more deciding which category of use, not very specifically exactly what we're doing. Okay, that makes sense. In order to move forward, we need to pick the category, because that changes the compliance. Now that's, that, that's perfectly fine. I think, I think we can come with that.
Why would you want to take a building that isn't K to twelve ready?
Well, right, so you would think you would want to make sure it is gonna work for the most stringent of, of, of needs.
And then there's other things too, like, is this, uh, assembly, does he have to consider assembly? There's an auditorium, there's a gymnasium.
Right.
Like, there's, there's probably things just beyond educational and, and business that, that have to be factored in as well, is my guess.
Uh, I'll go to Mrs. Santos first. Ms. Santos?
Um, I'm just wondering if we say if it's K through twelve, aren't we eliminating some of these possibilities as well?
Uh, we would be. That could be a discussion for next week, because, um, based on the conversations we're here, I'm hearing in the community, I'm hearing from staff, we're hearing from kids, they all seem to be heading in one direction. But we haven't, again, we haven't done the, the heavy lift as far as seeking that input.
But either way, if we tell him it's K through twelve, we're committing in one way or another to certain things.
Yeah, and I, and I believe K through twelve is the direction that we should be heading. Again, I'm just one voice.
Mrs. Shavs?
Well, I agree, the K through twelve makes sense if we're gonna be taking it in, and we are an education, K through twelve, you know, organization. So if, if we were to take this, our plan is not to roll this out till the next fiscal year, in which we would put whatever finances we need in that, because if we're balancing our budget now, we're not gonna have the excess to work on it for next year.
Well, we still have reserves.
Okay.
We still have revolving funds. Uh, we still have reserves that we could utilize depending on when the school committee makes the official request to the city council. So one, we have to identify a use, and then go before the council and make the request. And, and I, I don't want to get ahead, because there's still work to be done, but I wouldn't see, I can, I can say, we wouldn't have students in that biz, building in fiscal twenty-four.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, fiscal twenty-five.
Uh, Mr. Pawlowski?
And then just another clarifying question. So if we were to state that we were planning to use this building for K through twelve, does that mean we could no longer lease it to BCC?
I was gonna bring that up, Mr. Pawlowski. Thank you. So, if I may, so the brief, uh, the section states, "Brief history of the facility. A change of use from educational to business was done in twenty twenty-one to accommodate BCC." So it went from educational to business in twenty twenty-one, specifically for BCC. Why they did that, I have no idea. But anyway, what are the repercussions? My, my question was, and you'll get a copy of this, what are the repercussions of the change of use from educational to business that occurred in twenty twenty-one regarding any future potential use by Taunton Public Schools? So if we classify it back to educational, does that cover us for what Mr. Shav said, and Mr. Pawlowski said, and Ms. Santos said? Uh, we covered for everything that we need it, that we could possibly need it for?
So if I could just put on my business manager hat for, for a moment. So, um, BCC, at one point occupied, occupied space at Taunton High School. Uh, BCC has occupied space at Friedman Middle School. BCC has occupied space at Kohanet. So I, I believe, and we'll do our due diligence as well, and verify Mr. Carmichael's information, I believe it's the predominant use. And I believe BCC being the sole proprietor of that building, and being a public agent, I, I believe that's what triggered the code to business. But we'll do our due diligence, diligence to confirm that.
Okay, so where are we at? So we are, right now, we, uh, was there a motion to just receive and place this on file?
Receive and place on file and discuss at a future meeting.
Okay, all right. Motion was made by Mr. Viera.
She just seconded it.
Mrs. Shav seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. FY twenty-four appropriation update, see enclosure.
Again, I just want to bring the committee, uh, up to date that we received our final installment of our one hundred and fourteen million dollar appropriation, which ensures that the city of Taunton fulfills their obligation to meet a hundred percent net school spending. So I'm pleased to report that earlier this month, we received a final installment of our funding for fiscal twenty-four, which totaled one point seven million. This additional funding is critical in supporting our ongoing efforts to provide high-quality education services to our students. So to, in order to be transparent, I wanted to make the committee aware that seven hundred thousand has been earmarked for salaries, and the remaining one million dollar funds will be designated for transportation. I also want to express, uh, again, a lot of communities, uh, don't make it to a hundred percent net school spending, so I want to commend the mayor and her staff for honoring our request of an appropriation of one hundred and fourteen million dollars, and for providing us with the additional funding, which I believe will also put the city of Taunton over a hundred percent net school spending. And, uh, again, uh, as Mrs. Monahan pointed out, uh, I want to commend the business office and Mrs. Monahan for her work in managing the budget. Uh, we're looking like we're gonna have a surplus to end the year, which we plan to prepay, uh, for audit district tuition. We plan to pre-buy our cleaning supplies and purchase any, any, uh, any materials we have. So I do believe the Taunton Public Schools is, um, has been fiscally responsible, and that we are in a very, uh, un, unstrong or solid, uh, financial ground. So that takes a team effort by my administration and the support of the school committee.
So ju- just to be clear, so the one point seven million was part of the FY twenty-four net school spending?
Appropriation.
It wasn't above or beyond?
Well, I believe, I believe the city will be above a hundred percent net school spending, but that brings us as a, we haven't done the end of the year report yet. So, right, so when we do the end of the year report, we'll know if the city is under or the city is over. I believe, um, I believe it will be around a hundred and two, a hundred and four percent net school spending, once we shake everything out. Uh, transportation, again, that's a moving target. That doesn't count towards net school spending. Any large capital projects that we utilize our funding for does not count towards net school spending. I believe the threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand, and also crossing guards do not count towards net school spending. But I, sorry, but I do believe the city will meet or exceed the hundred percent net school spending requirement, eh, in large part due to this additional funding.
Excellent. Mrs. Shavs?
I just wanted to make a clarification, because at first, this sort of jumped out at me. The seven hundred thousand for salaries is not the total seven hundred thousand for salaries, it was just out of the one point seven million.
Correct.
Yeah, so how it was worded, it was a little funky there, so it's just out of the money that's come.
So you're a math major and an ELA major?
Well, no, but I, I, I looked at the number, and that's what jumped out at me.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Shavs. Wish to the committee on this item?
Motion received and placed on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, uh, lot of, uh, action on this one. Taunton High School Hall of Fame update.
No, it, it's, it's coming, and I'm very excited that we will be able to honor the rich history of our athletic, uh, traditions throughout this, throughout the city of Taunton. And I look forward, I believe we're gonna have a press release, is either gonna go out tonight, or we have a press release scheduled to go out tomorrow or Friday. So it's, it's coming. I'm very excited. And I want to commend, um, Mr. Otto Viannelli, who's gonna be retiring at the end of June, uh, Mr. Fox, for having the vision, and for his persistence to, uh, to keep nudging Mr. Otto Viannelli to make this happen. And I also want to commend Cynthia Johnson, our communications coordinator, for, as Mrs. Fagan knows, sometimes it takes a woman to bring two men to the table, to push them along, to get the work done. Right, Mrs. Fagan? And, uh, and Cynthia has done an outstanding job in synthesizing all this information.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, wish to the committee?
Receive and place on file.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Fagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Action item update. I do have one item here. Um, the last item, nine twenty twenty-three, "Refer traffic and parking situation, Taunton High School's safety officer." I, I, I bumped into the safety officer the other day, and there was something to be addressed in a letter, uh, from March, which hasn't been responded to. So can we please take a look at that?
Sure.
Uh, I, I didn't get to the extent of it, because I was at a intersection, I was blocking traffic, and it's like, I'll talk to you later, because he was a police officer, but I didn't want to get a ticket from another police officer, so, uh, we just left it at that, okay? Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much. Anything else on this action item update we need to take a look at? Taunton High School, Taunton Alternative High School awning, is that done?
That work is be, I believe, middle of May?
Okay. Gotcha. All right, so let's leave it on there. Anything else? The school naming, we have a date, just to make sure everybody's aware. Flag day?
Yeah, it's on, it's actually item, item five, June fourteenth.
Oh, sorry.
At ten AM, it's okay.
It's on the action item. It's on the action item.
So invitations will be going out soon. The food truck, so we have awarded the bid on the commercial kitchen. The food truck, we are expecting, I think last I heard was possibly end of May, sometime in June. And the outdoor dining area, I was there today, what a beautiful space. I can't wait for the awning to come in, that'll go over the door, and I believe we'll then order some outdoor furniture. So we'll have some updates. A lot of it is moving parts, work in progress.
Yeah. Ms. DeVere took me to lunch there today, so it was a great opportunity to take a look at it. Thank you, Ms. DeVere. I'll pay next time.
Anytime, Doc.
Don't hold your breath. Anyway, so that's all set. Now, this item in front of us, is this to be?
Oh, so I apologize.
Discussed?
Yeah, I received a, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So I received a letter from a student at Taunton High School. Her name is Anna Pereira. And a long story short, she is planning to attend, or she has registered to attend the PCC program, which is Project Contemporary Affairs, which is held at, I believe, at Stonehill. And she is, she is asking if the school committee would authorize or assist with the tuition, which is $2,850 for the two-week program that she attends. So Project Contemporary Affairs, PCC, I believe, when I did my fact-checking today, there are currently two students who have enrolled to attend the program, and there's one student who's interested. So in the past, school committees, schools have assisted with tuition to attend these programs. I would just say that whatever the school committee, if the school committee does decide to assist, that, that it be equitable, should additional students choose. The other thing I will say is, we are no longer members of PCC, because what our membership fee was, was not reaping us the benefit. We were paying $10,000 a year as a member, and we were sending maybe two, three, four, five, six students. So I think it would be advantageous to maybe look at that $10,000 and use it, earmark it in the form of scholarships to students who attend PCC versus paying, as the largest member of PCC, of the consortium, we are assessed the largest fee, so technically, the smaller school districts benefit because of the larger school district, and those smaller school districts tend to be more affluent and tend to, tend to send more students. So if you're thinking about how to address equity, maybe scholarships to help our students attend would be more advantageous than paying the membership fee.
Is that a line?
Ms. Pawlowski?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Pawlowski?
Is that a line item in the budget?
Contracted services. It's all lumped into that $1.2 million.
Oh, okay, as long, as long as it's somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pawlowski?
Yeah, I think setting aside the money that you would have been spending otherwise for a scholarship, that is certainly an equitable option. You just have to determine, how would you choose which students could benefit from that, that scholarship? So I'm assuming you'd have to have a committee, you'd have to have like, you know, criteria for choosing, assuming that you had more children applying than you had funds for.
So, and I would, and if that's the wishes, I would delegate that to the high school guidance councils who work on recruiting students.
I, I would like to also make a recommendation that we, we limit it. I mean, I don't think we should be paying the full tuition. I don't think that would be equitable, because that's not going to go too far. We have $10,000, and it's, what, $2,800?
$2,800.
And we have three students, or four students, if we have four students, forget it. It's not going to happen, right? So do we just pass it along to the high school, or do we want to put a money limit on it, up to, or? Mrs. Shavs?
Could we get a number on what's the maximum number of students that we've sent? Because let's, let's say we're, we're sending less than 10 students. So if we offer $1,000 a student, we could send 10 students.
I, I don't think, I, I do remember analyzing this data for Dr. Hackett, and I, I think it was on a rare occasion, we sent more than 10 kids. It's usually like six or eight students that would attend. So a $500, minimum $500, and if we're going to give more, we can bring it back to the committee topic. Start with $500 and see where it goes, and I can always bring it back if we feel that we should be doing more.
Ms. DeVere? I'll come back to Ms. Pawlowski.
No, I, I just, the people that were sent in, are they going to have the means and the capacity to offset the scholarship cost, or?
They're already planning to go, they're just looking for some assistance.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Ms. Pawlowski?
You know, so perhaps a thing that we could do, if we, if we are going to set up a scholarship, any sort of assistance with this, it might be nice to have like a presentation, so maybe the student could come to us and tell us about their experiences, right? So like, we can, you know, really, really find out whether this is actually something that's value-add to our students, that we want to encourage, that we want to grow, and like, if it is a great thing, then maybe we put, you know, more funds toward, more, more effort towards it. But if it's not been something that many kids have expressed interest in, then, you know, maybe it's not something worth putting the funds towards.
Can I just make a question? What did the $10,000 membership fee get us?
I want to say it was like a $2,000, $200 reduction in tuition.
$200 reduction?
Yeah.
Per student?
It was very low. That's why, that's why.
Good call, Superintendent. Ms. Enos?
Just since this wasn't on the agenda, shouldn't we just refer this to the administration and let them handle it? Motion to refer the email to the administration, let them deal with it.
Second. But I, I like that, but I think the budget part should come back to us, because we do have to put a dollar value on it.
He'll come back with a decision.
Yeah, good. So refer to administration to come back to the school committee for a financial piece. Ms. DeVere?
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but should we be taking any official action if it wasn't on?
I'm referring it, I didn't take an official.
Referring, that's fine.
I'm just referring, that's all, I'm not taking a vote.
I just want to make sure, Gil, I'm not.
We just got vote up, wrote up on for.
Gotcha. No, that's why, that's why I wanted to ask. All right, I'll second the motion.